All right, good evening everybody. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. It's Tuesday, April twenty-third at seven P M. We're in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall Cohasset. I invite everybody to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna, before we take public comment, if there is any, I just wanted to let everybody know that we do have one matter that we will take up at the end of our agenda under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance. And it's to discuss a grant application for the Complete Streets Program, which we've discussed at a number of meetings over this winter. The grant, we just got approval from the state to apply for grants, and the grant deadline's May first. So, and we're not meeting until after May first, other than town meeting. So, we are gonna take that up at the end of our agenda under the forty-eight hour allowance for that. Next is public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do so. Okay, not hearing any. The first matter is a one-day liquor license for the First Parish Carriage House Nursery for May seventeenth. Wanna come on up, introduce yourself, name an address, and tell us.
Uh, Lynn Vagie, school director for Carriage House Nursery School, twenty-three North Main Street. Uh, we're applying for a one-day liquor license for our annual spring fundraiser.
It's Friday, May seventeenth?
Friday, May seventeenth, from seven to ten.
Seven to ten P M., and it's actually at?
In the function room at First Parish.
At the First Parish function room, okay. Anticipated eighty to ninety people?
Yes.
Any Selectmen have any questions? Any questions? Nope. All right, is there a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for First Parish Carriage House Nursery School for Friday, May seventeenth?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in time. Next, next up is the South Shore Arts Center Arts Festival, uh, June fourteenth through sixteenth. This is a little more of a comprehensive permitting ask. And, um, if you would introduce yourself?
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Patrice May, I'm the, sorry, out of breath, executive director at South Shore Arts Center. This is our sixty-fourth annual arts festival that we've been having. Sorry, I mean.
Sorry about that, sorry. We have like a longer hearing after you, or I do?
I know. We host it every year on Cohasset Common, and in fact, um, the festival is predated the Arts Center. The Arts Center is an outgrowth of the festival. We estimate that between twelve and fourteen thousand individuals attend a three-day, what I call, art immersion during the festival, and it drags a lot of economic development to the town, to the village. And it also has two tag-alongs, um, fundraisers. First Parish has the lobster roll, their fundraiser, and Second Congregation has the strawberry festival, which is how some people confuse us, and they, that call the Arts Festival the strawberry festival. So, it means a lot to a lot of people in the town, and we hope that you will allow it to continue this year.
Can you, um, just kinda walk us through, I know like Thursday's the party, and just kinda walk us through your schedule? And then, I believe there's another, um, kind of activity that you're gonna be doing this year?
Yes, um, so, or we hope.
We hope.
So, Thursday night, uh, the festival is actually Monday, oh, sorry, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's Father's Day weekend, so, uh, Friday the fourteenth, it begins at one P M., concludes that evening at seven, reopens on Saturday, ten A M., concludes at seven, and then Sunday, Father's Day, uh, June sixteenth, noon to five. Throughout that time, there will be performances on soundstage. And then we have, um, two large tents, one that's filled with art, another one we call, uh, a feature tent. And on Thursday night, which, uh, the night before the actual festival begins, we have what we call a festival preview, and that is our annual gala that takes place at Cohasset Common. We have a request for a special event license that evening. This year, the theme is the, a sneak peek at the Folk Americana Roots Holiday in partnership with the Box Center. So, for one night only, we'll be having this glimpse at what that holiday would look like, and it will be right here. We usually have a Friday night party, we're not having it this year, which is why there's only one request for a liquor license. And then, uh, new this year, um, many of you know, as for the festival, you may not know that we have fifteen hundred children, schoolchildren, that receive free arts experiences every year, including about a hundred and fifty from Cohasset alone, just through the Deer Hill School. This year, the Artist in Residence Program is a butter, it's, um, in partnership with Marcia Blue, who does these great butterfly, um, and entomology art projects. So, our, every kid that's come through has made, uh, their own butterfly. There will be one thousand five hundred butterflies permanently and temporarily installed, excuse me, at the Arts Center. And we'd like to connect that installation with the festival, and we'd like to do that with a visual pathway of, um, through vinyl cut copies of those butterflies on the, very temporarily installed. During the three days of festival, have a pathway, and then they would be easily removed. They're self adhesive, uh, vinyl stickers.
Yeah, so they're just stickers, and they'll kinda walk people from the edge of the common down to the Arts Center?
Exactly, so we'll make a visual connection between the Arts Center and the festival, and it'll be very festive.
Sounds great. Any questions?
So, it's actually on the sidewalk, is that how you do it?
It would be on the side or go around the road.
If I'm facing the center, it's on the right or the left? It goes past Dooley's or on the other side? It's?
We were thinking, and it, and it's up for discussion because we, uh, we didn't even know if it was possible. We were thinking it would actually be on the street itself. But if that would be, um, confusing, we could have it on, my vision would be, it would be next, if it's gonna be on the sidewalk, it would be across the street from Dooley's, next to where the community center is.
I'd just like to say it's above my pay grade, I'll leave that up to Chris.
Well, I wonder, Jen, I'm gonna pick on you if you don't mind, just was, did, was this discussed at the, um, at the team meeting?
It was.
Safety meeting?
The, um, we just asked that it wouldn't be anything permanent, um, nothing spray painted on the road and easily removable, and Carl Cecito was there for that meeting.
Okay, so that, so, um, usually before we have a big event, there's a, there's an internal, I think you were probably there or something representative?
I was, yeah.
And, you know, our people above our pay grades discuss that kinda thing. So, they are well aware that there's gonna be something on the ground, on the streets?
There is, the board should approve it, um, I will certainly send over the memo that was just discussed that night, then they wait for your approval, and then you'll be getting everything again to sign at a future meeting, so.
Okay.
The original discussion was, uh, an idea of a spray paint.
Mm-hmm.
But we were worried that it wasn't temporary enough, and that was where we came up with the idea of the vinyl cuts, which would be self adhesive, and they would be easily removed.
Um, one question I have, and then I'll see if any of the other board members have questions, is just on parking? Cause I know that parking and signage has been a concern every year among everybody for very varying reasons.
Yep. Yes. Yes.
Do you wanna address sort of how the parking will be handled, and what the signage might be?
Absolutely, so, um, and I, we did, I did speak with the police about that again. We have secured parking at, um, South Shore Music Circus for Friday and Saturday. We have secured parking at Deer Hill School for Sunday. There's an event at the circus on Sunday night, which is included that. We have trolley service, as we have every year, that connects people from South Shore Music Circus with a stop at the Arts Center, and then two stops at the festival. There's parking here at Town Hall. I have, I did ask about wheelchair accessible parking and increasing that. The chief of police said that it would probably be best to keep that here at Town Hall, rather than, I had asked about possibly having it on the, um, main street side of the common.
Common.
He said that that wouldn't be a good idea. So, um, he said to, to keep it where it is, but just to increase signage with that. I've also spoken with them, and we have ordered signs through the police that will take care of the, the no parking.
Around the, the perimeter.
Yes, and they will be installing, so, they, as they have done in previous years, they install the signage, we pay for the signage.
Um, I, I have the benefit of some experience with the Arts Festival?
I know you do.
You know, just one of the things that, just in your, in your mind, with, with respect to handicap parking? I mean, oftentimes, the Town Hall parking lot is used for vendor parking, and then there's, of course, the porta potties are here, and trash, dumpster and things, so sometimes the handicap spaces are taken by vendors with legitimate handicap?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
So, I, I would just be aware of that, and, you know, you might wanna consider creating a couple of extra spots?
I was at, so, I did, um, I did ask about that, Jen can attest to that, so maybe we can revisit with them about that?
Yeah.
Because that was, that was my concern, and that's why I was asking for increased wheelchair accessible parking,
Yeah.
and they told me that there was enough, but I hadn't considered that some of our vendors may have that issue.
Yeah.
They, um, chief actually was also suggesting just today that there's an area that they can rope off for the farmer's market, so I think that right over on this side, and after that conversation, so we can also get that set up and added to the.
Great, okay. Selectmen, any questions?
Okay.
No questions?
I'm good.
See, this is what happens when it's sixty-fourth year, and every year it's, um, very successful.
Yeah.
So, we need a couple of motions, so we need, um, we need a, um, motion for approval for the event for the dates of, uh, Thursday, June thirteenth through Sunday, June sixteenth, um, on the common, for use of the common.
Make a motion, we approve the South Shore Arts Festival event license, uh, print, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Friday.
And Sunday?
And Sunday, June thirteenth through June sixteenth inclusive.
Okay, in a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second is a, um, is a, um,
One day.
One-day liquor license for the Thursday, June thirteenth event on the common? Make a motion?
Make a motion for a one-day liquor license for June thirteenth, uh, for the evening for the South Shore Arts Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, then we need an applic-, um, a motion for an entertainment license, right?
Yep.
I think that's the third one. Um, for the same time period, June thirteenth or June, I keep missing my date, sixteenth, yes?
Sixteen, I'll make a motion for an entertainment license for South Shore Music, uh, South Shore Arts Center, uh, June thirteenth through June sixteen inclusive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And just, just so we have it, what, when do you start your setup?
We start the setup on, uh, Tuesday, the, that would be the eleventh, and we break down Monday to seventeen.
Yes. So, could I ask for a motion for, um, the South Shore Arts Center for use of the common from Tuesday, uh, June, um, eleventh through Monday, June seventeenth?
So.
After a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I think we've got it all covered, um, so, good luck.
Now, what kind of discussion needs to happen with the visual pathway of the, does that require a vote?
So... I don't know. Anybody? Jen, Chris? I don't think so.
Well.
You wanna vote? Can't hurt to have a vote.
No, no.
I make a motion, we allow replacement of, um, their transient, uh, stickers for the South Shore Arts Center Festival on the sidewalk from the commons to the Arts Center.
On the road.
As approved by the police, you just, I had a public worst.
As approved by the police, yeah.
Yeah.
And the public worst department from June, uh, well, probably from Tuesday?
Probably, yes, we might start late.
June thirteenth through June seventeen inclusive.
Second.
Okay, can, can we just add an amendment, um, that it's on the road? You said the sidewalk?
Uh, make an amendment that.
Well, it's as approved by the police, so, if they approve it on the road, it's whatever they approve.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I mean, right?
Yep.
Sure.
New rule amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're good. Congratulations.
Thank you, I made it on time.
See you soon, you did, you worked.
And you got butterflies out of it.
Yeah. We love butterflies. Okay, uh, next up is a public hearing, I'll read the public hearing notice in a minute, for a retail packaged wine and malt license for the Anchor and Sale LLC, D B A Anchor and Sale. Cohasset Board of, uh, of Selectmen, acting as liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at seven oh five P M. In the Selectmen's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave. To consider the application of the Anchor and Sale LLC, D B A Anchor and Sale, located at eighty-five South Main Street, first floor, for new retail packaged wine and malt license. The proposed manager-owner is Megan A. E. Fails. The lease premises is located on the first floor of eighty-five South Main Street. The area to be licensed consists of a large rectangular retail space, a small rectangular kitchen space, as well as a hallway with two restrooms. The total square footage is twenty-one hundred square feet. There are two entrances and one exit. The public is invited to offer public input on the proposals in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Hearing's now open, I'll invite Megan Sales, come up, Fails, and, um, kinda walk us through what we are getting in front of us right now.
So, I just, um, have some pictures of the site as it is right now, and a floor plan that's color coded with, uh, the specifics allocated for various uses. So, um, just to sort of walk you through the store conceptually, you enter, and there's a point-of-sale counter which you can, uh, purchase ice cream and coffee or pastries. Then, working your way down the, um, the counter, there will be more pastries, some, uh, grab-and-go convenience foods, a deli case which will have sliced meats and charcuterie and olives and pate, and then another deli case with prepared foods, and another counter where you can order a sandwich. The dark terracotta space is all the kitchen in the back, which will be used for prep and baking. And then the gray area is a hallway and two restrooms, and then the room with the two, um, little, uh, window wells will be for seating and various retail opportunities, which will include a beverage case with dairy, juice, eggs, butter, beer, wine, and then a wine rack.
We have pictures?
The, the, the wine rack is available for sale, um, in situat, and that's the one I'd like to purchase. It does hold roughly two hundred bottles. And then the triple refrigerator is also shown, which will be basically one-third convenience items, and then two-thirds beer and wine.
That's what we're looking at right here?
Yes.
So, you are seeking a detailed beer and wine or wine and malt license just for takeout, um, retail purchase, um, in the areas denoted? Anybody with questions?
I went and looked at the location, looks, this looks like an accurate representation of what I physically saw.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, can't wait to see it full of the food and so forth. I only concern, I only issue, and I think it came up before, is that we wanna, we don't want this, we don't want this to be a blanket approval in terms of, of, uh, the liquor and wine to the whole thing, so, what is it, and so, we were thinking, what, fifteen, twenty percent? Or do we wanna make it a square footage, but we wanna have a limitation here? What is it that you, do you have a figure in mind or a percentage in mind?
Fifteen percent is.
Would I do it for you?
Is more than ample, it's about three hundred and eighty-five square feet. Um, and I think this is probably more like a hundred and ninety square feet, what I have right now, so it gives me room to grow, it may be, but honestly, the, the amount of space that's available for product is, is, um, about two-thirds of the space, and I have lots of ideas of what I'd like to do, so.
So, fifteen percent would do it? So, I just think when I, when we make the motion, from my point of view, was, you know, if we do approve it, if we approve it, uh, but not to exceed over fifteen percent of the square foot of the premises.
And, um, the, um, and right now, you're proposing just kind of one of the sections of the refrigerator for beer and wine, and then the, the wine rack?
No, it'd be two sections, and then one section would be milk, eggs, dairy, non-alcoholic beverages.
Two, two sections and then the wine rack.
And, you know, it, there, I'm sure there will be non-alcoholic beverages mixed in with that, but.
So, on, on this photo, the wine rack is to the right?
Yes.
I, I looked in, I didn't get a tour, I looked in.
Oh, that was you.
Kitchen in the windows? Yeah.
There's a report on, there was a report on that.
I heard, I, yeah, I was just saying, I heard that call on, on the police scanner, yeah. Jack, any questions, or?
No, I think that's great.
I, I went, I went by today, and, um, when I was reading the hearing notice, it said a small kitchen, and it's really not that small.
It's not a small kitchen.
There's a lot of space in there, um, so, and it looks great, um.
The baking oven is about three times the size of the beverage case.
Right, so, well, that's always good.
Yeah.
Gotta use it.
Yeah, it can't, it can't have too many baked goods. Okay, is there, I'll open it up for public comment, if anybody from the public, yeah, sorry.
I, I guess my only concern, my big concern is, it's another alcohol, uh, license, uh, in town, and, you know, obviously, how many do we need? I guess, I, I, I can understand it helps the business, totally understand, we're working in a bar, it makes oftentimes the overhead cover, basically, and it's a nice setup for, for breakfast, another place in town for breakfast. I guess I, I just don't want it to be the kind of go-through place when other liquor stores are closing or not, not open, and have that as the, you know, the, the local liquor store available, I guess, is what I'm down to. So, um, and that's my main concern, it's downtown, I know there was a liquor store that was farther down in the, in the business district, this is still in the business district, but it's, it's abutting at a lot of, you know, local residents, uh, or across the street from the residents, so I, I guess that's, that's my one worrying concern, is how it will play out.
I imagine I will have, uh, much shorter hours than Curtis, I don't, I don't know what their hours are, but I don't plan to be here past six or seven at night. If we are open later than that, it'll just be for ice cream, um, but.
And, and your pricing's gonna be a little bit higher than Curtis'.
It will be, yes, I have to set my, self, apart from them, because they buy in such bulk that they will be able to sell for a lot less than I will, so, it needs to differentiate, and, you know, we'll do an Italian month and specialize in Italian wines, and Italian foods that would pair with that well, and Spanish month and so forth, just trying to find creative ways to incorporate those products, and not pair them with the food and the cheese and so forth, offer a complete package.
Yeah, you brought up something that I, I didn't think about, but what are your anticipated hours? And I know you're still trying to get everything together to, but do you anticipate being open seven days a week, and approximately?
I think I have to be.
Yeah, yeah.
So, nine to six or nine to seven, and I'll fluctuate with the demand, um, but town does seem to really slow down by five or six. Um, and I have a family, so I'd like to be out of there every day at a certain hour, um, but I will be open seven days a week.
Okay.
Uh, Paul, is the fifteen percent satisfying you? Cause that was the idea, that was the discussion that you did.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think if, if fifteen percent includes the rack and the, and the coolers, I, I think that's reasonable. It doesn't seem like it's covering a huge area of the, of the seated area, so you could go ahead and not be... I, I guess I'm worried that if you're going in for breakfast or lunch, and people are kinda elbowing into the liquor cabinet, and it's, you know, I wanted to make it easy so that it's not, where you have a ton of business for, going in for alcohol, and you wanna have a nice, relaxed lunch. See where I'm coming from?
I do.
So, I guess the location of it is one thing, and how much, you know, enough room for a decent number of people for, for lunch and breakfast, but not overwhelming, and I think fifteen percent is probably reasonable, this is fifteen percent.
Right, I think, I think the concern in general is just, if I could sum it up, i- is just that we're not comfortable right now at this time with a, with a, another beer and wine store, that's all, and I know that's not your intent, so, I think that's just the comments that, um, we probably have heard, and, and the other thing is, there is no other place in the village, unless, I can't remember, right now selling beer and wine. So, for people that are stopping by and picking up, you know, little sprints, some crackers and some cheese, and some olives, sounds good to me, and, and a bottle of wine, so, um, great. So, I'm entertaining comments from the public, if anybody would like to come up and speak, um, on this matter at all? Lana, you know how to do it, introduce yourself in the record.
I've done it before, I guess. Yeah, my name's Woody Chidick, I'm, uh, not only within three hundred feet of the property itself, but I'd just like to speak as a general citizen in terms of why I think this is going to be a great benefit to the town. We all know the town is, you know, um, lost some, some retail space, and I think this is gonna help revitalize what we, uh, what we'd like to see happen to the town. I, I cannot imagine that, um, this is basically off-premise consumption, isn't it? So, I can't imagine there being any routiness or, you know, misbehavior, and we all, well, I don't wanna get into prior ownership, but, um, a lot of it has, you know, the way a business is managed is, is perhaps less dependent on the rules per se, and more in terms of, based on the intention and the, uh, of the, of the management and the owners, and I feel very comfortable that, um, the owners themselves have the best interests of the town at heart. This is, I just cannot imagine this becoming anything but an asset to the town. And as a neighbor, I'd be all in favor of it doubling, I mean, it's a, for, to be very selfish, it's a very small bar.
We are all selfish.
So, you like ice cream, man?
Yeah, so, but I, I, I think, this is, this is start, this is the start of, well, along with the Red Lion Inn and a couple of the other restaurants, but I think it's a start of revitalization downtown. So, I'd be really in favor of it as a citizen, so.
Thank you, Woody.
Thank you.
Yep, come on up, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Maria Osborne, I emailed you guys last night to the liberty of just getting some extra signatures, and I brought the hard copy in support of, um, allowing this liquor license. Um, I too am kind of in the neighborhood with the Chidicks, and grew up here in Cohasset, and am familiar with the old liquor store that used to be downtown, but I just wanna say welcome to the neighborhood, and you're welcome, and there's many more people I could've had sign in support of this. Again, I don't think the community looks at this opportunity as becoming a full-fledged liquor store, as more as an ambiance and a place, like we're saying, going, popping in and getting some deli meat, you're going to an appetizer and grabbing a nice bottle of wine to a party. And if you look at the town geographically, I'm, my background is wholesale retail, like you said, Diane, there is, you know, three A, three A, West Corner, um, the liquor stores, there's nothing in the downtown area as far as, um, being able to buy liquor. And, like I said, with her decision, it's not like we're going in and buying cases of Bud Light and going, you know, out partying, it's more of a kind of gourmet selection, almost like the old C and Cheese that we used to have back in the day. So, um, again, once again, I'm more than happy to get many more signatures. Like I said, I spoke to all of these people last night, myself, everyone was very excited about this opportunity, and just seeing what this team has put together, and I trust their values in picking good partners. It, it's sure, just like Mr. Chidick said, it's a lot better than what we had before, and it's sure gonna be nice to see when I walk out of my house and walk downtown, a storefront that's vibrant and busy, and seeing the Red Lion Inn, and seeing Atlantica, Atlantica come back, it's just all a plus for the town, so.
Thank you, um, I'll, I'll continue to, let anybody speak, I just wanna be very clear about the license application, and it's for retail, wine and malt, um, and we sometimes slip into the word liquor, but it, it's literally beer and wine only. We are limited in our all alcohol liquor licenses in town, and this is not one of those. This is a, uh, we're also limited with these licenses as well, but this is for wine and beer only, um, and in retail. So, uh, no consumption on premises. Anybody else from the public would like to speak on this matter? Okay, um, Selectmen, any last minute comments? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the, uh.
I did that, I had needed that.
Make a motion that we approve the retail package and wine malt liquor license application as presented to us in the public notice for the Anchor and Sale LLC DBA Anchor and Sale located at one eighty-five South Main Street with the one provision that this, this liquor license not, not, not exceed over fifteen percent of the premises.
But you really wanna say that this, the display of liquor not exceed fifteen percent of the rentable square footage? I think is the most accurate way to say it.
Did you get that, Tracey?
Yeah. Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Tracy Bottom, Cora.
I know, which is, um. Yeah, good. So, we're gonna just take a two-minute little break because we are running ahead of schedule. Our next matter is seven forty-five, but it's our, our treasurer, so Chris is gonna go get him and we will sign these licenses. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting on the ninth? Jack, is, the vote would be three to zero because Jack was on it? Just, just that vote.
That's where it was.
I think, I think that's, is that Jack or Karen? We're early, but now they went foraging for snacks. Uh-oh.
Never wear them out of the room.
Yeah. All right.
I have a box of Girl Scout cookies, depending on stuff.
We're not that hungry yet. Speak for yourself, honey.
One of our Girl Scout cookies.
Yep.
And a shrimp one, so.
Oh, those are good. Oh, you need a cup of coffee with those.
I don't have, I don't have any coffee, I'm sorry. She's squirting me to the water. No, she's protecting me, make sure I don't have, she's protecting her cookies, she's protecting.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna be doing some deep dive into numbers tonight. First up is Paula Nars, who is our treasurer, who's gonna give us our, what is it, the second quarter, third quarter?
Fourth quarter of that.
Fourth quarter of calendar, goes by calendar, yeah, okay, so. Of our investment summary. Give us the bad news.
Yeah, as you can imagine, yeah, it is, is not great news. We were done on everything, as was most of the market as well. Expendable trusts were down point six to one point three percent for the quarter, point three to one point six for the calendar year-to-date. They're up one point nine and three point two for three years and up two point five to three point four for five years. Permanent trups, permanent trusts were also down two point five for the quarter, one point one for the calendar, up four point nine for three years and up five point one since the inception. Other post-employment benefit funds were down six point three to seven point five for the quarter, down two point four to five point four for the calendar, up four point three to seven point one for three years and up two point seven to five point six for the inception.
Okay.
So I guess the, the bright spot is that we, for the most part, we beat all our benchmarks for the quarter, but the bad news, this is that the benchmarks weren't all that impressive. And actually, I was looking at them and towards the, like, the middle of the one and, one year, we were, we were off our benchmarks, but then towards three and five, we started, we're beating them again for the most part. So, um.
And things are rebound in the first quarter, right, of twenty nineteen?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'll have that report shortly and we'll see how things go at the town meeting too, as far as being able to change what we're investing in, but.
I, I was gonna, I was just gonna ask about that because just for everybody, one of the actions we have at town meeting is to adopt the prudent investor law, is that right?
Correct.
And that will allow us to make investment decisions beyond what we're currently limited to, which are like twenty,
Twenty-two equities.
Twenty-two equities, like McDonald's and Big.
Yeah, they're all S and P five hundred and they're limited as far as they don't hit all the sectors or anything like that.
Right, and, and we have no flexibility whatsoever, that is, that's our investment portfolio. But, assuming we pass this article at town meeting, then it will have.
Then we could do anything that's prudent.
Give us anything that's prudent, so. And hopefully we'll see, you know, some of these, you know, when they take big dicks, well, hopefully it'll work a little bit better.
Sure, how many willing, yes.
Um, any other questions?
Yes, that's not gonna protect us against a down market, but down market is a down market, but it gives us more opportunities to, to adjust.
Sure, of course not. Take advantage of the up markets.
And this, uh, somebody from the state came to the MMA Legislative Council and said that they're gonna rewrite all that language and fix it soon, like this year.
Yeah.
They gotta do it this year before, because next year's an election year, because that's how it rolls.
Yep.
Yeah, well, to, to be honest with you, that's been kicking around for a while and it hasn't gained traction, so this'll allow us to do it independent of that.
He said they were committed to doing it and they were in the process, because I raised the issue specifically. He said, all taken care of, is what he said.
Did you get him to sign to that?
No. He was out of the room before.
Exactly.
That's right.
Any other questions, Diane?
Just an extra, just one question. So of all the investments we had, it looks like the OPEB were the one that got hit the hardest down, is it correct?
The OPEB, yeah.
So is that just because that's the nature of the investment of OPEB, they have higher risk?
Well, that one is not tied to the legalist, that already is prudent investor, um, so you're in.
They expected you better.
But.
Choose another prudent investor, huh?
Depending on the market, depending on the market, over, in the long term, for sure, because actually if you look out.
Right.
Right. It's up four to seven percent.
Exactly, if you look at long-term, it's up higher than the others overall.
So that's already in the prudent investor group.
Yeah, they have the different laws that they have to follow with, with, like, the print and stuff, but yes, they, they can go into funds and.
So not to be that worried about it. So we shouldn't be that worried about it.
What it allows you, it gives you greater diversity, which is, you know, right now we have, to some extent, diversity risk because we're limited to twenty-two stocks if you're gonna play in that market. I mean, otherwise you can, you can put it all in the savings bank and it can have, but then you have inflationary risk, so you can get into.
Right.
So, I think prudent investor is the way to go, I think.
Well.
We'll see what town meeting has to say.
Yeah.
And then we'll take a seat.
I'm sho, well, I'm hopeful. We take the recommendations of, those have been working on that, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Good, all right, thanks Paula.
Great.
Thank you, Paula.
Paula, are we doing next? Oh, Cedar Acres.
Correct. There are, um, Goon Council requirements, just to make sure that the laws are being followed. And what, part of what they're doing with this is asking for you folks to certify that our bylaws have been followed with respect to the Cedar Acres, private way, the work that was done there. And I believe it was included in your package, a copy of the certificate and a copy of the bylaws, specifically what you're certifying to. And so we're just looking to have, I'm just looking to have the clerk of the board of selectmen to sign off on that certificate saying that that was in fact, all those aspects were done. There's three outlined that they're specifically concerned about. And that's that the board of selectmen have determined that the improvements are required as a public necessity, that there was in fact a petition from the butters and that the private way has been open to the public for at least two years.
Um.
Those are all, those are all true.
Yes. My only question is, those are a part of a policy and not a bylaw, is that, is that okay?
No, no, we, we.
But it's not incongruous with the bylaw, right?
Yeah. We, yeah, we actually, the, the policy is that we refer, the bylaw refers back to state law, the state law requires these triggers too.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the signature of the board of selectmen clerk, certifying, certification regarding temporary repairs to private ways?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, can, Chris, can you just kinda summarize the Cedar Acres project for us and just so that people out there can understand what we, what we're doing right now?
So the, after lots of conversation at town, the selectmen adopted a betterment policy and then went to do a series of bylaw amendments, so here it is. At the, the bylaw amendments kind of codified what was in state law in a cleaner, simpler, citation way. The board then formally approved, this is the first project under that, the, the residents came forward, then they met the requirements. There was a cost estimate generated and the, the, the cost estimated was one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. The work was done, the actual total cost only came in at one hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, fourteen cents, so it was substantially less, which is good. That does not include any potential interest, by the way, on the, on the bond. And that included a small police detail, most of it was the actual paving work, so this was Cedar Acres Drive and Cedar Acres Lane. All what got done, and also included a small inspection cost, like DPW, that was part of DPW, DPW did fill, uh, capacity for DPW to fill inspection. So the, the net impact was originally estimated at nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars per parcel, it's now down to seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars per parcel. So.
And how do, how does that get paid?
It'll get paid over a ten-year period as a betterment attached to your taxes.
And can somebody just pay it outright if they want?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, how much total per parcel?
Seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Plus interest if they take a betterment.
Which they can pay every ten years. Correct. I mean, they're all, well, they're, they're all taking it as a betterment, they either pay it as a lump sum at the end of the time.
Got it.
But it runs with the land, so even if the parcel changes hands, it's still attached to the parcel.
So is it required if the parcel changes hands, do they have to pay a betterment?
No, I don't believe so, that's usually not how betterments work. Yeah.
Yeah, it runs with the land.
It runs with the land, yeah. And I, and in the package you'll see.
You have a lien.
A lien, probably.
And the treasurer clerk is responsible for collecting, so. And you see there's a detail caught, you know, all the actual bills are here and so. It was, it, it, it was a very, after a lot of work, I took the, you know, the, the board stuck to this, we figured it out. And it worked, in fact, we have others, some other communities that are starting to talk about using this as well, because they're on private ways as well and they have mechanisms for fixing their problems, so.
Very good.
So this will actually formally impose the betterment and, and, and which we need to do so we can collect, collect the expenses, so.
Right, any other questions on this?
Do you have another vote?
Yep.
I just need a certificate.
Um, I decided, I think, it was just a piece of paper, right?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work from the whole town and you were instrumental in getting one of those, thank you.
This is the first, yeah, we saw this from the beginning of an idea we discussed with citizens, actually came to us a couple times, if not eight. And then, I discussed this a lot and then we developed the policy after several meetings and we've just seen the whole thing through.
Yeah.
Most of us were here through the whole, and we finally signed off on one, it feels, it feels, it's been a culture.
Right, it is good, it wasn't always easy and, you know, there was some contention, but it shows you and.
Not at all, no.
Get done.
You know, hat tip to, to Select Montgomery too, because he's always writing us on policies, but we need them so that everything's equitable and we have ways for other people to address issues in town.
Evidence underscore that things are not always so simple. That said, if you stick to it, you can usually find good outcome, and that's, and that's what happens, so.
Oh, this one, good, excellent, congratulations, everyone. Okay, so, we are still ahead of schedule, but do, does our PEB committee, are they willing to start out?
We are here, ready to go.
Okay, all right, let's do it. So I'm just, for the people at home, if you would introduce yourselves and queue up your comments and just.
And we do have another member of our committee here as well, I'd like to recognize, Donna is also here. I am Tim Davis, I'm chairman of the PEB committee and this is.
Katie Dugan, a member of the PEB committee.
So thank you for, for having us here. The report, and I assume you have a copy of the, you all have a copy of the report, represents a body of work of five years, two committees, two town managers and several iterations of boards of selectmen. While everyone serving on one or both of the OPEB committee or the current PEB committee have contributed to the proposals before you and it's likely we would've come to the same or similar recommendations, we owe a great deal of thanks to Katie Dugan for her dedicated collaboration and extraordinary efforts that have helped us get to this point. Katie has really gone above and beyond and really gotten us to the wheel. So we owe a great deal of thanks to Katie. There will certainly be several more meetings as we reach out to the community and other constituents for comments, suggestions and recommendations. But what we're here for tonight is to get the approval of the board, or at least consensus, that we should move forward with the recommendations that you will hear tonight. The PEB committee is really a, a next generation of what was originally started as the OPEB committee, other post-employment benefits, and as you all know and perhaps the community should know is that OPEB is really the health insurance for retired employees. Now, that's easily said, it's a little bit more complicated than that because every new employee has an expected benefit which would be an OPEB benefit when they retire. In two thousand fourteen and fifteen, the OPEB committee worked with actuarial studies, we discussed trends and budget forecasts to really understand what the town's OPEB liability was. It was really the first time, I think, that the, the town, the board of selectmen and a committee really looked carefully at what was becoming a nationwide problem of unfunded liabilities, both pension, which we're not talking about tonight, but the OPEB unfunded liabilities. At the end of that period, which was a two-year tenure, the OPEB committee recommended that the retired teachers pool go from a GIC policy to a MIA policy and that the future retirees, we did this, we mitigated this, so the future retirees would go to a fifty-fifty contribution rate. That resulted in significant savings to the, to the town. The PEB committee, which the board of selectmen reconstituted from OPEB to PEB, had a little bit broader mandate in that they wanted that, that committee to look at, beyond simply the healthcare issues, but how we were gonna deal with both retiree healthcare, the PEB, PEB issues, but also the pension, Norfolk, we're in the Norfolk County Pension Plan, is that the right place to be, are there other? Is that the right place to be, are there other ways to deal with that? Uh, and then we were, we were charged with updating the town manager and the board of selectmen quarterly. I'm not sure we've been really up to date on that, but here we are, uh, two years later, updating you.
It's a church.
And then, uh, to issue recommendations to the board of selectmen by the spring of two thousand nineteen, and here we are in the spring of two thousand nineteen. So, uh, I think we've done what, what you asked us to do. You know me, you know Katie, and Donna is here, Carl Forsyth is also a member, couldn't be here, Mark Maggi has been a very, uh, uh, great participant and is a member. And of course, Don Pyatt has been a, a terrific, uh, uh, participant in our, our whole process. Don Pyatt, the town accountant, he's been great in helping us. Uh, Diane has been our liaison, uh, Paul Carlson has been for, I think, in every meeting. Ellen and Barb is the, the, uh, school committee liaisons, have been very active, and Brian Host has been to some of our meetings. And certainly, uh, I can say that Brian in the OPEB, he was a member of the OPEB committee, was terrific in getting us started. And also Linda, uh, born of all of KMS, has, has really been very helpful, she's, she's a terrific person to have as a, as a resource. We've met, uh, ten times since, since, uh, we started, we've done a, uh, a lot of benchmarking to kind of get a sense for where other towns, uh, are and done a deep dive into a couple of them, particularly North Andover and Wayland, uh, who really, really looked at this, uh, issue in detail. And it was, you know, very helpful getting, uh, the, the history of what they did, and I think it really drove a lot of what we, we did. And here is Don, who I just mentioned, he's been a terrific, uh, help to us over the course of this.
We're running way ahead of schedule, Don, so I apologize, don't worry about it.
And then I mentioned, uh, KMS has been, uh, been great in keeping us, uh, really, we're developing different, uh, actuarial scenarios for us as we looked at, at different possibilities. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn this over to Katie to, uh, drive us through this presentation, as Katie did a lot of this, this work.
Yes.
Thanks, Katie.
Uh, so the next section I'm going to go through is on background of benefits, and there's kind of three topics that we're just going to cover. The OPEB liability and trust fund, healthcare benefits, and the Norfolk, uh, county pension. And the reason we wanted to do this frankly, was partly for ourselves and for the community to kind of baseline. Um, now, I think a lot of people have little pieces of information and perhaps, um, we don't have in one place, kind of documented a base. Um, so part of the goal here was to really put on paper, um, everything that we knew relative to kind of these, these three subjects. I'm not going to go through each slide in detail, but rather try and hit the highlights so we're not here all night, uh, cause I think the key is to get to the recommendations. But I do think it's important for the community to understand that, um, there are some key facts that you need to, um, understand before you start to make decisions.
Can I just interject, because there is so much to say, and we've talked, um, about this and, and I think we will have future discussions that are meetings
Yep.
that are just dedicated to deep diving on some of this for people that want to, but given the selectmen's schedules, I ask them to
Yeah.
condense it and give us kind of the highlights, um, as a regular meeting.
Exactly, so I'm going to go through this super quick, um, so, uh, just starting off with the OPEB liability, I think the first thing people need to understand is that there has been a change in GASB from when we began back in two thousand ten, uh, we had GASB forty-five, we're now under GASB seventy-four and seventy-five. Um, that was effective as of FY eighteen. The biggest impact of that was that there's actually a significant reporting requirement, whereas your net OPEB liability is actually on the balance sheet of the town, okay? So on the next page, um, this is just, again, a little bit of background to show, um, that even though you have accounting standards, um, the OPEB liability is, it fluctuates, and I think we ha, as a community, have to understand that it's fluctuated from, uh, when we began reporting on it, um, and it's going to continue to fluctuate. There's a couple of key things that drive that, um, discount rate, um, long-term rate of return, inflation, healthcare cost trends, and then obviously the number of plan members that we have. If you actually look, um, between two thousand fourteen, which is kind of the last snapshot that, that the OPEB committee brought to you, and two thousand eighteen, which is what we were operating off of, you know, there were three major changes in terms of some of these key assumptions. You had the discount rate move from four point seven five percent to three point nine five, um, which has the impact of actually increasing your, um, net OPEB liability. Your long-term rate of, uh, of investment return actually went from four point seven five to seven point five percent, and that actually decreases your, um, liability. And then total plan members went from five eleven to, um, five five five, um, five hundred and fifty-five, and that actually.
Let me just interject in here. This does get a little bit confusing because it changes dramatically with your assumptions of either, uh, the discount rate or the rate of return.
Yep.
And we're looking out thirty years, so it really does have a dramatic effect. I think what I'd like you and the town to realize is that regardless of what you use, the, the process and the recommendations we have would remain the same.
Yep.
So that's, that's really the issue, it, it does get a little confusing to, as you look at it.
Um, and, and GASB did, uh, GASB did drive the change in the discount rate, uh, it went from a number that was more of a subjective, um, conversation with your actuaries to one that's actually now very formula-driven, it's based on the number of periods that you actually have funded from your trust fund, um, and then blended with, um, a future municipal bond rate for those that you're, that you're unfunded. So it's a, it's a, it's a more formula-driven, but the impact of that was that we actually, um, decreased our discount rate from GASB seventy, what, GASB forty-five to GASB, um, seventy-four, seventy-five.
Just a quick question, a quick question.
If you look on the next. Yeah.
On the long-term investment rate going from four point seven, I have to sort of point back, is there any reason, any fundamental underlying things to, that you increased that, any reasons for that?
Again, um, that's GASB that's driving it, so, um, they, they changed how you can, what you can actually, um, take into assumptions, and you're now able to, um, uh, go at a, I think you were captured, you had to go at the municipal bond rate before, which is a four point seven five, and now you're able to actually capture a rate of return that is more in line with what you would invest your assets at.
And GASB, for those of you who don't know, is the Government Accounting Standards Bureau or something like that?
Yes, exactly.
Board.
Board?
Board.
Right, and they.
Again, those aren't things that, that we can influence as a community.
Right.
Um, but, um, it does impact what your net liability is going to look like, and if you flip to the next slide on slide eight.
One thing I'll just interject though, Kevin, uh, I think we'd all think that seven point five percent as a rate of return going forward is aggressive, we'd all love to have that, I think. Uh, uh, as you heard, moving to, uh, a prudent investor will give you a better opportunity to do that. OPEB is not, or the PEB, OPEB fund, trust fund is not tied to that change because we already can do that, and certainly we will aggressively try to get to that kind of return or better, but I, I think it is a bit aggressive. But again, regardless of what you use for your rate of return assumptions, the plan and the program, the recommendations we have remain the same.
Don?
Yeah, I, 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 I think Tim actually just covered what I, what I was going to say, I mean, GASB doesn't tell us that we have to use a seven point five. In the discussion with our actuary, that is consistent and reasonable with other clients that she, she uses, and a seven point five is reasonable. We could go against the grain and do a, a lower discount rate, and that, all that would do is increase our.
Increase our liability, you know.
They look at it, this is a long-term liability, it's something that's going to be going on for a long term. Over the long term, we're expecting that those returns would hopefully be in that seven, seven and a half percent range.
And ultimately, the recommendations, as you said, would remain the same, cause this is all kind of.
Yes.
So I should let the selectmen know, we've never, never seen a seven point five percent return in any of our investment portfolio. It's three hundred basis points higher than anything we've done historically. So, you know, we really should think about, whether or not that's reasonable.
Well, and, and we'll get to that, um, because one of the issues is that we are treating these assets, which are, are, are OPEB trust fund, which is a fund that we're building hopefully up to fifty or sixty million dollars over a thirty-year period, the same as we're treating our general stabilization funds in terms of how we invest it. And one of the reasons that you'll see a recommendation relative to a funding policy, we need to think about this asset, this pool of assets very differently. Not only is it, is it going to be, you know, ten times larger than our general stabilization fund is currently, and we need to get to that level, but it's also something we won't dip into for thirty years. We can put in place a funding policy and a blend of assets that looks di, different relative to your OPEB trust fund than you would relative to your general stabilization or, um, you know, your other, um, stabilization funds.
Yes, it's still very aggressive. And, and, you know, I, the only reason I'm saying that, I'm not trying to call the performance, I just think if we're going to be prudent about this and come up with something that's a reasonable, uh, estimate of our liabilities going forward, we may want to be a little more conservative on our return.
Well, we could, I mean, all, as Don pointed out, all you do is you change that, if you bring that down closer to four and a half percent, your liability, your projected liability just goes up.
So as you extend the term of any kind of liability, changes in that interest rate have a much greater elasticity. Of that change is much greater, so.
Compounding.
A three hundred basis point change in a thirty-year liability is a huge swing. So it, it, you know, even a hundred basis points on, on a term like that makes a big difference. So, you know, I just, I'm throwing it out there as something.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Jack, but keep in mind, it doesn't change what we're proposing.
No, 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 I get it, I get it.
And, and I guess the point that we're trying to make is that we don't, we shouldn't get fixated on a particular number, because as you, as you change assumptions, which is going to happen, the size of liability is going to grow or shrink, um, and it's, as you can see on this chart, it's already happened to us over the same.
So my only, my only point doing, I'm not trying to dig on this, my only point saying this is there's a really big difference in the net present value of something discounted at seven and a half versus something discounted at five or six, you know?
No, I, I absolutely, I absolutely understand.
And it, it really affects, I mean, we have such little cash flow to work with in town, you know, it could affect how we think about putting that cash away to fund the liability. You know, we, we, we're not like Hager, we don't have a lot of commercial property where we can park money away and not affect operations. You know, it's, it's so tight in this town that, you know, we, I, I just think we have to be careful and prudent, that's all.
So, um, this is, this slide eight is really just to show where we are currently, which is, um, as a fiscal two thousand eighteen, which is the latest actuarial report, the net, um, OPEB liability that is, um, after subtracting out our OPEB trust fund is forty-two point three million dollars. If you compare that to where we were last time the OPEB committee came, we were at thirty-two point four million dollars. And so there's been a ten million dollar swing, but approximately two-thirds of that change in the net OPEB liability is attributed to the change in discount rate.
Yep.
Um, so y, y, you can see that there's huge impact there. And so to that point on slide nine, um, this really drives it home, this is direct from the actuarial report, is that a one percent decrease in the discount rate, um, increases your liability by eight million dollars, and a one percent increase in healthcare costs, um, assumptions, increases your liability by eleven million dollars. So, um, it obviously is sensitive to those two factors, discount rate and healthcare trends.
How about headcount, did, did you guys look at how headcount?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's built into it, that option is built into it, but, uh, actually, headcount has a relatively minor, I mean, compared to this.
Compared to these two, these are the two that get called out from a reporting perspective. Yep. Um, so slide ten, um, talks about, um, kind of the good news, uh, behind this, which is we did establish an OPEB trust fund, um, back in FY two thousand twelve, like many communities, um, we got the wake-up call and, um, began to, uh, chip away at this. The balance on that OPEB trust fund is currently, you know, three point three million dollars. Um, that's a combination of both, um, in, interest, but also, um, hard-earned and hard-won appropriations, which over the last seven year, years have totaled two point seven million dollars. Um, appropriations annually to the OPEB trust fund have averaged three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's a combination of, um, what was appropriated in the operating budget at annual town meeting, but also what we've appropriated our free cash at special town meeting. All right? Um, and as it stands today, um, the OPEB liability, that forty-two point three million, million dollars is seven percent funded, so we've obviously got a ways to go. Um, on slide eleven, um, a, a lot of detail, I'm not going to go through all of it again, but this is where I break into talking about healthcare benefits. Um, healthcare expense for the town is, uh, made up of two components, both active and retired employees. On this slide, I'm just addressing the active employees. Um, there's currently two hundred and seventy employees that have elected, um, town healthcare benefits. About eighty percent of our employees choose to enroll in town healthcare benefits. Um, they vote through election periods, just like you do through your employers, um, and, and, um, based on family decisions. Some people opt to go on a spouse's plan or perhaps on their parents' plan, whatever the situation is. So eighty percent of employees are enrolled in town, the other twenty percent are picking up benefits, um, through other carriers. That split in terms of our active employees, um, fifty-five percent are on family plans and forty-five percent, five, forty-five percent are on individual plans. Um, what that means in terms of cost, um, the annual cost of plan, this is not the town split or the individual split, but the total cost, um, of an HMO family plan is twenty-seven thousand dollars, and a HMO individual is ten thousand dollars. And currently, you can see the splits, HMO family is thirty-one sixty-nine, and HMO individual is, um, eleven eighty-nine with our active employees.
Just, just a quick question on the, um, the people that are enrolled, have we seen how that's trending? And it's hard to know because there's obviously additional employees or not, but are, are more people electing to go into?
It's a bouncing ball, um, but it's actually something that we started tracking, um, back, um, it was with Mary Gallagher, actually, it was the first one.
Yep.
And in a couple of slides, you'll see that we now have a methodology to actually break the year-over-year increases into, into two components, the premium increase, which is driven based on, um, MIA, and what the enrollment increase. In some years you win, in some years you lose when it comes to enrollment. On the next slide, on slide twelve, um, this talks about our retirees, uh, we have two hundred and forty-one retirees on town healthcare benefits. Um, very different profile, obviously, in retirement, seven percent on family, ten percent on individual, and the vast majority are on Medicare, um, plans. Um, and we look at the actual annual cost of that, um, the Medicare Managed Blue and the MedX two are about a third of the cost of an individual plan. So they're, you know, you know, thirty, thirty-six hundred, thirty-nine hundred dollars versus the HMO family at twenty-seven thousand dollars. So it's, from a town perspective, um, it obviously is, um, retirees cost less than active employee. Um, on page thirteen, this is what you were asking in terms of healthcare expense, so for FY nineteen, our healthcare expense, uh, was, is, uh, five point four million dollars. Um, and that is both, um, our retirees and our active employees, so the five hundred-plus people that are, are planned participants, um, about seventy-five percent of the expense is active employees and twenty-five percent from retirees, and that just comes from the mix I was talking about before, where a HMO family is twenty-seven thousand dollars and a Medicare plan is three thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of what we've experienced in terms of healthcare expenses, the average year-over-year increase has been six percent, but it varies from as low as zero percent, um, to as high as thirteen percent. The other good news that we discovered in looking at some of this is that actually over the last seven years, we had budgeted conservatively. So as a result, the town has averaged surpluses of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which means that we budgeted one number, our actual healthcare, their expenses came in lower, so that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, flows into free cash, um, and helps us hopefully fund OPEB, um, although there's not a formal connection there, um, it is a piece of that funding. Um, and then, as you can see in the chart below, you can see the variance year by year, but in some years you see a one percent increase in enrollment, but if you look at FY sixteen, we got, got hit with a double whammy of a nine percent premium increase and a four point three percent increase in enrollment. So, um, it can really, um, vary year to year. Um, on page fourteen, we now, uh, break into talking about the Norfolk County, um, retirement system, which is something that's, um, is, we still are peeling back the layers on, but we've gotten some, some level of knowledge. So the Norfolk County pension is, um, uh, the pension plan that our town employees are in, not, our retired teachers actually are part of the, uh, mass, uh, teachers' retirement system. Um, that total pension liability is one point five million dollars. Um, the good news.
Billion.
A billion dollars. A billion dollars, excuse me. The, the good news relative to the Norfolk County um retire- retirement system or pension is that um it's actually sixty-three point five percent funded. Um there's a great article that um Don shared with us from City and Town in March of this year, and it went through and actually benchmarked um the over hundred retirement systems, um it was a put out by PARAC and um the Department of um Revenue and some of the Technical Services Division. Um the median funding ratio for pensions of those like hundred or so retirement systems in Massachusetts is sixty-four percent. So the funded ratio of Norfolk County relative to the median funded ratio of um the other pensions is is spot on, sixty, you know, three point five versus sixty-four percent. Of those um plans, sixty-five out of the hundred were in the range of fifty to seventy-five percent funded. So the vast majority are funded at kind of the same level that um Norfolk County pension is. There were twelve that were funded between zero to fifty percent, and of those twelve, ten have been there since two thousand ten. So they're just, they're in their pits and they remain in the pits. Um there were only twenty-two out of the hundred that were actually seventy-five plus percent. So um the good news uh out of all of this, whether you like Norfolk County or not, is that it's it's kind of right in the hunch with um most of the plans that are out there from a retirement si- system perspective. I just included a little pie chart, just so we know who we're in the Norfolk County pension with. Um there are nineteen municipalities and the respective housing authorities, along with um a couple of regional school districts and a couple of water districts. Twenty-five entities in total. Um and we look at them, the top five participants by employee contributions were Randolph, Dot, Stoughton, Canton, Franklin and Westwood. They represented about thirty-eight percent of the employee contributions in a, in the annual basis. Um Cohasset was kind of as usual, middle of the pack, we were ranked thirteenth out of um twenty-fifth, we're not the largest, we're not the smallest when it comes to um our participation in this particular um pension system.
Question on the housing authorities, why are they part of the, the county systems? Aren't they state? I wanna just.
The county probably owns the properties, you know, it's.
The state does, as far as I know.
Well, but the employees are not state employees, their employees have the authority.
So they had to stick them somewhere.
A town, a town employee, I I don't, I don't, I, yeah.
Don't worry about it, I'll go do my research, I'll Google later.
The problem is we don't have any, I don't believe we have any uh Cohasset housing authority, they don't have any full-time employees.
So there's no one there with pensions, okay, thanks.
Uh next slide is um pension expense, uh I forgot to mention this, but I I think everybody on the Board of Selectmen knows this, our single biggest expense is payroll, is twenty-five million plus. Um our second largest expense is healthcare expense, which is five point four. The next one you'll see in terms of size is um pension expense, and that for FY nineteen was two point five million dollars. Um and that's what we pay um based on um Norfolk County's based on payroll, um our payroll and what our contribution is to that uh retirement system. Um since FY thirteen, the pension expenses averaged a ten percent year-over-year increase. And that's varied from as low as four percent to as high as twenty-two percent for um increase in FY eighteen, where I think we all had that long-range planning group wake-up call of, oh my gosh, Norfolk County um is there and it can bite us if we're not paying attention. Um going forward, Norfolk County um retirement system is giving guidance to municipalities in general to budget ten percent increases in, in pension expense until, until funded. So we actually this year, we budgeted three percent, but again, that was based on guidance from.
It was based on the actual appropriation we received.
So, so we, we pay on a, is it on like a headcount basis, or we pay percentage of payroll?
Percentage of payroll.
And their goal for this ten percent, recommending the ten percent increase is really to get them fully funded?
Yes.
Well, that's to get to a hundred percent funding, and by twenty, twenty forty.
Twenty forty, twenty forty.
They have, they have their funding schedule, it's set somewhere at seven percent per year. But based on the allocations being done based on each municipality's percentage of payroll, they tell you ten percent to have that cushion. So if you in one year have a, you know, kind of big hiring in that one year that puts your payroll higher as a percentage, they give us that cushion so that, you know, we don't get bit.
Um so that was really what we wanted to cover in terms of background. Um now we're gonna get into the specific recommendations that the PEB committee is bringing forward. Um and we broke it down into strategic and economic, the strategic recommendation really is to make this a permanent committee. To um not sunset our committee, but rather um keep it in place. The town is gonna be addressing this liability for the foreseeable future and to monitor and benchmark and frankly, assist the community in ongoing work. So that was recommendation number one, and that's something that other community, uh communities have done, is keep the PEB committee um in place to assist with implementing recommendations and moving some of those recommendations forward, but also um reporting out and monitoring on uh where we stand relative to OPEB.
Did we set a sunset date certain?
I don't know what you, what the discussion was last time, I mean.
I'll look that up.
You know, you, you clearly s- you clearly sunsetted the previous committee to get it reconstituted.
Yes.
I don't remember from the charter, frankly, um but a recommendation is that you keep us alive. Um.
I just don't want it to be next week and.
But no.
I don't think it is, but.
I don't think it is either.
June thirtieth or December thirty-first would be my guess, but I'll look that up and we'll address that.
Yep. And what we've talked about as a, as a, as a committee is that this isn't necessarily heavy lifting all the time, but it will go through periods where especially where we're um either working on specific recommendations or we're, we're getting ready to report out whatever periods the Board of Selectmen would find appropriate that we're pulling together relative to um actuarial reports and Norfolk County um pension. Uh the recommendations are really two, two major, uh three major ones. Um first is a funding policy, and we'll show specific slides on that, and there's two pieces to that recommendation, a baseline and then kind of an accelerator to a funding policy. Um the second recommendation is actually um a corollary, which is uh the investment policy and putting in place a specific policy for the OPEB trust fund, which is gonna grow from the three point three million dollars to well north of that in order to be able to be fully funded. And then the third recommendation is um relative to future employees. We'd like to um have further discussions um and with um Board of Selectmen, but also with um HR after co- collective bargaining is concluded about transitioning future employee benefits um under collective bargaining thirty-two B, and there's a window to do that, frankly. That window is really between June of this year and June of next year, um where we're in that spot where we can actually.
So would that be to like a, like a standard level four or three B for municipality or retirement?
I think at this point, we'd rather, we'd rather have those conversations with um Miriam first, the kind of structure. We do have some so- specific ideas that we've actually.
For just ideas of what, what options are out there?
Right, and I guess part of it is um we'd like to get through um police and fire. And all of this would be subject to mass general law thirty-two B, and what that means is that you have to put in place uh an employee committee, um and that has representatives from all the unions. So when we say it's subject to collective bargaining, it's not individual units that you're bargaining with, but rather um it's one employee committee that has representatives from all of our, what are we up to, seven or eight? All of our.
Seven on this side, seven on this side.
Okay, there we go, um all fourteen. Unions would have representatives and it would be the town negotiating this, but it is subject um to collective bargaining under thirty-two B. But we need to um, we need to finish the collective bargaining with fire and police and then we need to finish conversations with Miriam. So this will be an ongoing conversation that we'll have with Board of Selectmen, probably frankly, in executive session.
Yeah.
Um so the first funding policy, um the funding, first part of the funding policy is really around putting in place a annual funding target, and what we're talking about here is while in two thousand nineteen, we've actually appropriated um five hundred thousand dollars to OPEB, there was a hundred thousand dollars appropriated in um the budget and then another four hundred dollars that was appropriated at special town meeting in the fall. Um that's great news, exceeds the five-year average of three hundred and ninety thousand, but we're not holding ourselves to a specific standard. It's, it's frankly, not what convenient, but we really haven't put a, a lot of thought into what should be our target.
Within the initial operating budget.
Within the operating budget, but o- overall frankly, um because the way that we looked at it was a combination of both the operating budget and um what we're able to do out of free cash. And we, we budget in a conservative manner in order to generate free cash. Our financial policies actually require us to hit a certain level of free cash. Our financial policies also tell us that that free cash can only be invested in um stabilization funds or one-time expenses. So the logical result is to use some of that free cash or use a larger chunk of that free cash to actually fund OPEB. We are actually recommending uh this kind of the base um policy that uh the Board of Selectmen adopt a target starting at five hundred thousand dollars, but actually increases at annual rate of three to four percent in line with um payroll. So five hundred thousand dollars um in today's dollars is about two percent of payroll. Um and we're, we're recommending that that five hundred thousand dollars um compound at three or four percent you choose, which is roughly payroll increases. So that by twenty thirty-four, uh we're actually in this scenario um contributing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And by twenty forty-four, which is kind of the, the outside of this, we're actually contributing annually a million dollars. Um we are not recommending or or putting in place a stipulation that we do that out of specifically the annual budget or out of free cash. Um we do think that there's the need to have flexibility, but the combination of those two sources, which we have annually, um we are recommending a fixed target, and and part of the conversation we had was that I think we're gonna have a lot of benefit um by having a fixed schedule that we're looking at, that we know we have to hit X Y Z number in a given year. That will help us drive conversations. And this is similar to what um other communities have done. Plymouth um has done it as a percent of payroll, Belmont and Franklin have taken different approaches. Um this is what we found um to really be what the committee was recommending.
And I think what we're trying to do here is get a uh a, a funding policy that the community supports, the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager and the community in general support it. So that it's not, what have we got left over at the end of the year we put into OPEB? Because that's gonna ultimately get us into trouble. So we want uh a policy, a directive from the community, this is what we're gonna do, whether it comes out of the budget or whether it comes out of free cash flow, this is what we're gonna do.
And on the next slide, you'll actually see what that gets you. So if you put in place part one of our funding policy recommendations um between twenty eighteen and twenty um forty-eight, which is kind of a thirty-year period that the actuaries work with us on modeling, you actually can get to um eighty percent funding of your net liability. Now, I, I have to, I have to note that one of the things that um, the, the benefit of putting in place and fully funding is that you actually get to discount at the same rate as your long-term um uh rate of return on investment. So the, the current Gatsby seventy-four, seventy-five says that if you are fully funded, your discount rate is equal to your long-term rate of investment return. If you're not fully funded, you get penalized and you get this blended discount rate. So when we talk about um the liability, the liability actually shrinks when you get to a fully funded scenario because it says you can um balance or equilibrate your discount rate and your um long-term rate of return. That being said, um if you put in place this base policy of five hundred thousand dollars compounding at three to four percent, you can get to eighty percent um funded by twenty forty-eight.
The other thing too, to keep in mind, is that by having a policy like this that shows getting fully funded, which we'll show you, the bond rating agencies look very favorably on that, so our borrowing rate will go down if we adopt these policies.
The second piece of the funding policy um takes advantage of um something that we uncovered, which is the fact that our Norfolk County pension is on track to be fully funded by twenty twenty-eight. Um and that's based on conversations with Norfolk County. And it's also based on the fact that um the state is mandated that all of the pensions be fu- fully funded by um twenty forty. Um back in nineteen eighty-seven, they set a target of um twenty twenty-eight in the um of all the pensions being fully funded. Two thousand seven, the financial markets crash happened. In two thousand ten, they revised the target from twenty twenty-eight to twenty forty. Uh but if you actually look at um the, the pensions today, the vast majority of pensions are actually um on target to make that. Um there's a, there was an interesting little scattergram in the um, the same City and Town article. And um the vast majority, just based on that hundred systems, are, the mid, all of them are predicting that they'll be done by twenty forty-eight, but the majority of them will be done by twenty thirty-five, based on what the actual reports are saying today.
And Norfolk has told us that we will be there by twenty twenty-eight.
And what's, what happens when you become fully funded from a pension perspective is that you actually land out freeing up expense, because at that point, when you're fully funded, you only have to cover the normal cost of your pension. And as a result, um we will have um freed up two point seven million dollars in annual pension expense. Um one of the things that come out, that comes out of um this discussion in City and Town, but also other communities such as North Andover and Belmont, um is that people are putting in place funding policies that lock, OPEB funding policies that lock up that cash when it becomes available from the fully funding of their pension systems. And it is one of the rec- the, one of the best practices that's being recommended by the state is not to leave that um pension windfall when the pension becomes fully funded as a uh jump ball in the future. But rather put in places now, uh put in place policies now that address what happens.
When that.
When that happens. And we're not saying that it's gonna happen, while Norfolk County is saying that's gonna happen in, in twenty twenty-eight, could it be twenty twenty-nine, could it be twenty twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, absolutely. Um but we're moving in the right direction relative to that, and there is state legislation in place to ensure that we do get to fully funded. So the, the other piece of the recommendation from a funding policy perspective is to actually lock up a significant portion of the, of the pension expense when it becomes available in twenty twenty-nine. And if you look, if you flip to page twenty, what you'll see happens is that you go from that baseline of five hundred thousand dollars funded, it grows comp- or compounds at three to four percent um annually. Because you have eighty percent, if you then kick in the accelerator in twenty twenty-eight, you get to fully funded very quickly. Um by either twenty thirty-seven, if you kick in a hundred percent of that two point seven million dollars that frees up, or if you only kick in fifty percent, you decide the other fifty percent goes to um the capital stabilization fund or other town um priorities. Um you get to fully funded by twenty forty-two.
We are recommending a hundred percent, by the way.
Bet you are.
Exactly. But I, I, you know, uh we joke about it, but I mean, the difference between twenty thirty-seven and twenty forty-two in terms of this liability is, is frankly, nothing. But the, the good news is that um there is an additional accelerator out there that um if we choose to put it in our policy, can actually um get us to our end goal, which is fully funded.
Presumably when we fully fund healthcare, which will be long after most of us are paying attention, um that would still free, free up a lot, that would free up operating budget cash, just like this is doing, right? Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at the budget in twenty eighty-six or whatever the nu- whatever crazy year it is.
The fund should be generating enough money to this whole station.
To pay, so that. So it's, it's just.
Well, that's the, yeah.
It's just shifting the, the water.
Yeah, if not, you'd have it still kind of like the pension, you'll have the normal cost that needs to be contributed in there to, to continue that fund
Contributed in a day.
to build and and maintain that funding, uh fully funded status, but it wouldn't be the million plus per year that we'd be doing by
Right. Yep.
And all of this, you know, and, and what we don't know over the next ten, twenty, thirty years is, is how recession is going. is, is how recession is going to impact our pension funding or OPEB liability, because both these are tied to the ability to generate the investment returns. And so, as soon as you hit a two thousand seven, which there will be a two thousand seven, I can't tell you whether it's gonna happen in the twenties, thirties, or forties. That's gonna set all communities back. But if you've gotten, if you've gotten a head of steam behind you relative to liabilities, it hurts you less.
It's also why we, we're recommending the investment group that looks at this and develops an investment policy for this fund, that will take all of that into consideration.
So, that's the, so that's the second piece of it, is locking in or locking up the pension expenses when they become available after fully funding Norfolk County retirement system.
Why does Norfolk County think they can get this done by twenty twenty-eight? I mean, they have almost a six hundred million dollar shortfall. They're basically talking about putting an incremental hundred million dollars a year into that fund to fully fund.
Well, it's their investment policy that they're banking on.
They're buying waterfront property somewhere? So, it could be, I mean, be reasonable, it's not gonna be twenty twenty-eight.
Well, that's why, that's why we've said that that number can, the date can move and the numbers can move a little bit. But the policy, I think, is a sound one regardless of what your assumptions are.
Okay.
Yep.
And the point is not to leave it to future boards of selectmen, or, you know, once that, once you get, so, once you get closer to fully funding, that money becomes much more real and much more appetizing. Versus now where it, it, I still think that we're in a place where we can talk about it rationally. And we can see the benefit of.
Yeah, throwing two and a half million dollars at a liability like that a year really accelerates everything.
Yep, it does. It absolutely does. So, on page twenty-one, this is the corollary that we've been talking about, which is need a funding policy that gets, that builds up your OPEB trust fund, but the other piece of it is growing the OPEB trust fund at a long rate, at a long-term rate of return that actually matches your actuarial assumptions, but also gets you to where you need to be from a funding perspective. So, we have three point three million dollars. If we do this right, we're gonna have a OPEB trust fund balance of over fifty million dollars by the time we get to the end. Currently, our funds are fifty percent in Pritt, which is a seven point four percent return on investment, and Bartholomew, which has a four point seven percent. The actuarial reports assume a number much larger than that. We do have a cash and investment policy, which the Board of Selectmen approved back in two thousand fourteen, but it doesn't specifically govern the OPEB trust fund. We met with Paula and had a really good conversation. I think Paula and Don and the OPEB committee were all on the same page that given that we're talking about a fund that's going to outpace our general stabilization, we need to put in place a policy that specifically governs this. Couple thoughts that we had as a committee. One is that we need to put in place, we're gonna achieve a seven point five percent rate of return, higher percent of equity, obviously. We also today have quite significant management fees from Pritt and Bartholomew, have forty to fifty-five basis points. If we're growing an OPEB trust fund to fifty million dollars, we better have a different deal as it relates to management fees on a sliding scale down. And then, you know, some of the things that Town of Wayland and other communities have done when they put in place specific OPEB investment policies, I've also addressed when you can make withdrawals, because God forbid you actually use your OPEB trust fund to fund other problems or future problems. There's nothing that, that you're, not fund other problems, but fund your, your current, your pay, pay-go portion of OPEB. You can't, you can't take your OPEB trust fund and pay ICE expense, but you could theoretically get into trouble one year and have to cover your retiree healthcare benefits out of it. We don't wanna do that. And I think in a funding policy, you would specifically address that in terms of when you're able to make withdrawals from the OPEB trust fund. Those are some of the things that other communities have done. So, those are the recommendations. In addition, the one related to future employee benefits is something that we'd like to continue discussions with and come back to the Board of Selectmen at a future date. So, what we've laid out are some just quick next steps. We would welcome suggestions in terms of who else you'd like us to communicate to. We had talked as a, as a committee about meeting individually or with both of the new Board of Selectmen members when they come on board, formally presenting to the school committee, presenting to advisory. We'd like to get an article in the Mariner to kind of more broadly update the community on where we are. You know, the first thing that we need to work on out of the gate is to continue discussions relative to future employee benefits, because as I mentioned, there is a window, and so we can't really slack on finishing that conversation. We, and as I said, we have some specific ideas, but we wanna meet with Miriam and meet with Chris and the school committee before we really move that further. During the summer, I think that'd be a great time for the OPEB committee to work with the Board of Selectmen on beginning to draft some of the policies. If you're supportive of putting in place the funding policy and investment policy, begin to get those in place, because that is a process in terms of drafting it, you know, working with the Board of Selectmen to review the draft, working with advisory, and finally getting it approved. And then, you know, we've talked a little bit as a committee about what else we could be working on going forward besides just reporting and monitoring. There's some validity to actually the OPEB committee looking at our OPEB trust fund. If you remember, when the Municipal Modernization Act came into place, there was a, a new chapter thirty-two, section twenty, which governs the OPEB trust fund. We adopted our OPEB trust fund back in two thousand twelve under the old legislation. It's a slightly updated version under MMA. We've never really gone through the, we've never really gone through the benefit analysis of what it would take or if it's important for us to move to the more streamlined version under MMA. It'd be similar to what with, what we did under the SPED stabilization, where we adopted the old one and realized there were some benefits under the MMA. One, I think the OPEB committee would like to bring that forward and have that discussion. And then, you know, we're open to other priorities, but that's really, there's enough to keep us busy for a while, for sure.
Fabulous. Phenomenal. I, I just wanna say one thing, one of the, I met with Miriam Johnson, who's our HR director last week, and one of the things we are gonna start talking about here and then developing through the town is we are gonna make a commitment to doing more municipal finance training for all the relevant committees, new people and, and old people. It's all, those of us that have been around for a while, those refresher courses. So, I think we will absolutely incorporate this conversation in a municipal finance discussion that we would require selectmen, advisory, capital budget, and staff to, some staff to participate in. And so, we're a hundred percent behind you, and Miriam's already starting to look at what other communities do in terms of onboarding new officials at various levels. You know, we're gonna have a lot of transition, even on advisory, we're losing three members. So, there's a lot of kind of high-level finance minds that are moving and shifting into other areas. So, we, we have to be committed to that. Don's probably scared.
It's a lot of one-on-one questions.
A lot of one-on-one, but that's okay, that's all right, we're good.
Yeah. So, please come up with a discussion. One of the, it looks fairly obvious that could potentially save a lot of costs is if the Medicare age induction drops at the federal level, then you may see a pretty good drop in the healthcare costs for the both current employees and retirees. Once they hit sixty-five or sixty-four, sixty-three, sixty-two, as the, if the age were to come down, you're spending fourteen percent for Medicare Men's Blue versus, you know, a hundred percent in a family plan. So, that may be one.
That would be wonderful.
It would work not just for our town, but across the municipalities for current employees and retired employees.
Well, do you think the likelihood of that happening anytime soon?
Depends on whether Bernie is our next president.
Yeah, I, I think that's, but if you look at it from the, from the cost structure for municipalities across the country, that's a, that's a, an obvious plus.
That would, that would shrink the, the end game just a little bit.
Right. And so, you shave down a little bit there. The other thing which in the past, and people look at were pension obligation bonds. I know that legally we can't do that, but one option is to look at ways to manipulate or make legal a pension obligation bond while we have the economy growing nicely, is potentially using a pension obligation bond versus, again, shaving down what's, what their required investment we need in the.
Well, there's a trade-off to doing that too. So, look at that.
Are you running for Congress?
No, no. And the other one was, you know, now that the economy's doing well, should we be funding more upfront for the next few years while we.
Well, I think if you do this, that's, that's pretty, this is pretty aggressive in terms of getting to where we wanna be.
We may be able to be sold to the town saying, look, we're, we're doing well economically and townwide.
I think you're great, but if, if you can agree to five hundred thousand dollars a year plus, you know, the pension part of that, I think we're getting to where we need to get to.
I mean, again, we're, we're, I think the, the OPEB committee would always welcome greater than the target number, but not having a target number, a target number that grows in line with payroll becomes too simple to keep it at a comfortable level versus getting to the level where frankly, we're gonna have to dig a little deeper. And we're gonna have to figure out some things like future employee benefits in order to be able to fund the base number that we're talking about.
And we've been very strategic, and I hate to use the word, because it came back to haunt me, but we have been lucky in, in a lot of ways that, you know, we have had the free cash that we've had. It's been very, you know, strategic prudent budgeting, but it's also, there hasn't been, God forbid, disaster kind of things. So, to your point, we don't wanna have the beggars like, oh, well, we just can't do it this year, or, you know, like, oh. And if we set a po, and again, a policy's a policy, it's not, I got into your head. It's, but it, it's still an important benchmark that we should always be striving to get to. And it should be, it, it should be kind of as set in stone as we can possibly be.
And to the extent we can, you know, try to increase each year the initial annual town meeting contribution, you know, as, as we can, you know, in twenty twenty, we've increased it from a hundred to a hundred and fifty. And if in the next year we can in, increase that a little bit more, that would be great to get us to that final, you know, schedule contribution each year.
You're gonna have to do both. You're gonna have to dig deeper relative to what you're putting in your operating budget, and you're gonna have to dig deeper relative to free cash flow. There was a stat, we only contributed an average of twenty-three percent of our free cash to OPEB trust fund. And part of that was that in the first couple of years, we were contributing a huge percentage of it to general stabilization. But now that we've transitioned our general stabilization, we're just topping off with fifty thousand dollars, we need to, on this conversation as a community, we've really got two priorities, capital stabilization and OPEB. And how do we split the baby on those two? We're, we're suggesting one path here, and I'm sure it will be arm wrestling capital for both free cash, but also that, the Norfolk County retirement system pension expense when it frees up.
So, I just wanna point out that, I mean, I think it's really important for us to have a process for how we do this, because I think the five hundred thousand dollars a year is a real stretch goal, especially if we get into a flattening of new growth in the town. In the past, we had that committee that got together before we did the budgeting, and we actually talked about how much free cash we had, you know, what kind of long-term allowance obligations we were booking that year, and how much cash was actually left. It was a group of people from the school, people from the town, and other citizens, one from advisory and capital, where we actually got together as a group and talked about what that is. I, I think there should be a written-down process, and it should be really transparent to everybody, and it should be put in the calendar so we can do this every year. If we don't do it, I think these kinds of discussions will just get put off till maybe we don't do it.
Well, well, Jack, I appreciate that. I think what we'd like to have is a policy that is supported.
I'm totally, so, so let me take a step back. I, I, I love the work you did, I think it's really important, I'm fully supportive of everything. I'm just thinking about implementation and what's going to happen going forward. And I just know, because I've been doing this for fifteen years, that a big number like this is gonna scare people. The board of selectmen changes, people in advisory change, people are gonna forget, because there's a lot of pain to allocating out a half a million bucks a year for this. And I'm just saying, if we don't have a process for it that's well documented and shared by all, we're gonna have a problem, you know, keeping this going for, you know, you're asking for a thirty-year commitment. Yeah. So, I'm at, so, so here's what I'm doing. I'm saying maybe, maybe that becomes another recommendation. Come up with a documented process for how the town actually goes and sets these allocations.
Well, I think, I mean, I think a piece of it is that once it becomes a financial management policy, it drives the work that Don does, and Don is, and Don is doing it.
So, I just know there's gonna be a lot of crowding out, and there's always gonna be a fight.
No, I, I.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, so, I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to create context for how you can have that fight and do it constructively. That's all. And it can't be, you know, capital budget advocating for what they want offline, you guys advocating for what you want offline, and, you know, it's gotta be, people come together to work it out.
One of the things that, you know, just in terms of timing of, of next discussions, I mean, we have our budget message, the selectmen's budget message, which directs Chris and Don to our priorities for the budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year, which is, will be FY twenty-one. I mean, we'll, we always talk about like, in July, we will be wrapping up FY nineteen, we'll be starting in on FY twenty, and we'll be planning for FY twenty-one. There's, there's very little break, and that's almost like the most intense time, because you're literally working with three budgets at that time. But our, I mean, we should be able to have that discussion about making a policy statement on a five hundred thousand dollar, whatever, whatever we end up deciding before our budget message, because then our budget message would incorporate that.
That's why we're suggesting that that policy is written over the summer. We're not starting from scratch, and we've, we've got a financial management policies already that this will get woven into, but there's lots of examples out there of what other communities have done. So, I think we could use that time quite productively to get that piece in place. And I agree that if you're gonna begin to showcase it and walk the walk and make it part of your process, you do it at the beginning of your budget process for fiscal twenty twenty-one.
You actually allocate out the cash flow right from the get-go.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And we don't do that. We, we don't. We leave it till, you know, March.
I think that's our point, is that you make that a policy, that you're allocating that every year.
Well, and I do know.
That and other pieces, you know what I'm saying? It's gotta be everything. It just can't be one thing.
Absolutely. No, that's, that's the work that's gotta be done.
Yeah.
I know that advisory, I think their upcoming meeting, and I don't know whether it's later on Thursday or not, but they have as an agenda item discussion about recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding our FY twenty-one budget message. So, I'm sure that they, they're already, you know, it's already on their radar to have those discussions. So, we're, we'll keep it, we'll keep the discussion moving along. Gentlemen, any comments?
Do we have support of the Board of Selectmen to continue on with this?
Oh, absolutely, and I, um, what would we be voting on?
Just to improve their recommendations or?
I think mainly what we want is, is, you know, your approval for us to continue on on this path.
Right.
That sounds, you don't see any big red flags, you don't see any real issues.
I think what we're, we're looking, if we have your support on the recommendations, then we'll continue on what, with what we put on page twenty-two. April and May is gonna be continued to communicate recommendations to key constituents. And then, May and June is gonna be working with Miriam and Chris and some of the school committee relative to future employee benefits. And then, over the summer, we're gonna start drafting up some draft funding policies and draft investment policies that will, will start the work, but then it's gonna come quickly back to the Board of Selectmen, because you, it is your policy ultimately.
So, when do you think you need for us to support you if you connect here?
Well, I think we probably will have, have to have several reporting meetings as to where we're going here during the summer. And my hope is we'll have something for town meeting next fall that will be the policy that says this is what the town agrees to.
Right, and the policies don't get voted on at, at town meeting, it ultimately is a Board of Selectmen vote.
Right, but, but, you know, one of the things we could do in the fall is, is we'll have had our policies adopted by the Board of Selectmen, and we can then say, you know, the Board of Selectmen adopted a policy that's gonna put, and I hesitate to take a vote tonight on five hundred thousand dollars, but let's say that's the number after we have some hearings and we hear from advisory on that. Then, you know, we say the policy's this, and we're moving that we, if we put a hundred and fifty in, and now it's three fifty, or, you know, we have that as kind of backup for putting that money away. So, I, I mean, this is fabulous. I endorse all of this and wanna advance all of these discussions. You know, I don't wanna take a vote specifically on. Um, you know, I don't wanna take a vote specifically on we will redirect the pension.
So when I said, you know, they, they, they told us what they wanted to do over the summer and in the fall, you know, we can just take a vote saying, yeah, let's go to it.
Go for it. Make a motion.
All in favor?
So we're, so we're deputized.
You're deputized?
I move, we approve the steps outlined in the, uh, presentation document. And we, and we direct the, uh, the committee to keep working on that.
Continue their good work. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
I assume we're not sunsetted.
Well, I don't, I don't think you're sunsetted now, but if, if, I will read the charge. If you, for some reason, do sunset, we will put it on the next agenda to just extend it or remove the sunset date in general, and then we can deal with it as we discuss what the committee should be going forward with. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much for your work.
Okay, so, guess what, we're already five minutes behind now, but that's, that was well worth it. So, next up is a discussion on, on the Alternative Energy Committee. And I'm gonna, um, ask anybody from the Alternative Energy Committee sphere, um, to come forward. And I'm gonna queue up what we're gonna be talking about tonight. And I'm also, um, gonna hand out what I think Mary Jo will probably hand out. And this is really, um, for discussion tonight, not, but approval. So, basically, um, let me give a little history, if you don't mind. Um, on the Alternative Energy Sources Committee. Um, if, any of us who've, who've been in the Troyka realize that the Alternative Energy Committee appointments are one-year appointments, and it's, it's a real pain in the neck every single year to reappoint a lot of the same good people. And the reason for that is, the Alternative Energy Sources Committee was formed by action of town meeting in two thousand and five, specifically to deliver a report on alternative energy options for the town at town meeting in two thousand and six. And it was set up to be a Troyka appointment, it was set up to be a scheduled committee, and it was set up as one-year terms because the theory, theory was they were gonna ultimately sunset at the end of that time period. So, we have kind of an administrative, um, cluster, if you will, um, with the Alternative Energy Committee. They have been in existence since two thousand and five, and in the past eight and nine years have done amazing work, have made so many strides, they, you know, we're a green communities, we have the electric cars, they, um, they really are an energy and force in and, in and of themselves. But they don't live within any charge, um, or any sort of structure. So, um, in a administrative capacity, I have talked to the clerk a couple times, and also, um, Troyka discussed it a little bit the other night, because the moderator was like, oh, I don't, I, you know, I never, I wasn't fully aware why we, why we do these reappointments every year. And we think what the right thing to do is, is to create a, a, a parallel or a, a, create a new Alternative Energy Committee, which we will have to name something different. Um, just because there is an Alternative Energy Committee kind of on the books, if you will. And, um, create it as a, an energy committee, or whatever we decide we wanna call it. Make it a selectmen committee, um, that we appoint and we do, like we usually do. If there's seven minutes, seven people, we do three-year term, we'll do, the first grouping will be a three-year, a two-year, and a one-year. And then they'll get into a full cycle of three-year terms, and then we will charge them. And they will report to us, and we will give them the support and the endorsement of ideas and, um, implementation, um, paths. Because right now, they are sort of, um, orphans in our great government system, and they're, again, they're doing amazing work. So I wanna make sure that we, we put them right on the path, um, where there's open conversations all the time amongst the relevant boards, and their ideas are, come here, or go to another committee, if, if that's appropriate. Um, so I did talk to them about it, and this has been a discussion I think some of you have also, um, talked to them about. And, um, so what I would like to do now is just turn it over to you all and your comments. And then what I would love to do is, um, at our next meeting, approve the charge. This is a sample charge that they came up with, and we can make edits or whatever we need to do, and add our typical language of terms and all that. Approve the committee next year, and then we will appoint any of the members that are currently on the other committee, um, to this committee. And we'll leave the other committee to deal with at a future town meeting in terms of sunsetting them officially.
Okay, so, thanks. I know it's complicated, because it's kind of. Thank you very much. So I'm really happy to be here with Steve Girardi, who's, uh, the chairperson of, of the current committee. But in some ways, the current committee has, is in a wobbly state, because there's been so much uncertainty. I mean, without a question, since two thousand and five, the committee has been functioning and spearheading, working closely with the town manager and, and the staff here. It takes a lot of cooperation. So, thanks for recognizing what is taking place with the green communities, a five-year plan, and apparently we're on target to meet the twenty percent reduction, uh, that, that we actually have a commitment to a reduction in, uh, our energy wastage. And, um, we're actually, um, really proud of the progress we've made with, uh, the heating and ventilation and air conditioning, the solar array. I just circulated a, um, this is really like a dashboard description that Bill Fusco, who's one of the members of our committee, put together, and he's very talented in putting together dashboards. So, this is actually a dashboard that recognizes savings from the solar array, not even including March and April. So if you include March and April, from the solar array, we have saved ninety thousand dollars so far. And so, right now, it says eighty-two thousand five. So this is money that, um, the town is not aware of it. You know, I mean, part of our concern is actually the lack of understanding.
He better be.
But truly, as far as, you know, the whole question of raising awareness, educating the town, working with the schools, I mean, making this a true green, uh, municipality, uh, this is, this is something that we are capable of contributing, of, of making the town aware of not just the savings from the solar array, but think of all the money. Chris, is it five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand that we've received in grants through the green community? That money has all gone into, uh, improving the, the system so that we have energy efficiencies in the town buildings. What's the money we're saving from that? Nobody knows. So, so I feel as though this is the type of committee that, um, our, our role should really be not only working closely with the town to, to make the town aware of or do research as needed regarding grants and opportunities to save money, but also, we're hoping that we can report quarterly, maybe using something simple. Maybe taking fifteen minutes, where are we, what are we saving, what are the opportunities, do they make sense? Because the truth is, every time we have a project, the amount of work that's involved, it's extra work on the staff, we know that. So, so if, we're, we're more of a proactive committee, where, whereas staff here are constantly reacting to other things. So, what we're doing is super important, but it isn't the urgent type of work that others are doing. That's why I, I, I think, um, in addition to requesting that we be reconstituted, and, um, honestly, there's turnover taking place in the committee. If, if everyone has a genuine interest in applying, if we could just reapply all over again. Because we have people like Tanya Bodell and Patricia Cummings that are super, who are interested in really stepping right back in. And we have so much talent in this town that we could, we could really be a strong force, but we need the connection with board. We absolutely need the mandate from the board, because otherwise, the town is reacting to your other priorities. So, that has been a real, um, concern for us. It's obvious that the benefits are, they're multiple, they're, they're immediate and long-term. I mean, they have to do with people who really care about climate, and they have to do with people who really care about the budget and efficiencies. I mean, it's, anyone in this town would have to agree, this is the type of work, it is, it's long-term investment. So, so we're, it, it's rare for us to actually get any attention. The solar array was visual, but nobody's cheering HVAC systems or, or, you know, it's, so we need you. I mean, we need you. So, so, um, so one request is to reconstitute, another is, um, I know there's a, you have strategy and you have goals. If you, if you could put in a little phrase in your strategy that says, you know, that, that actually, energy efficiency is a cross-cutting goal. It covers just about every other goal that you have, but if it's more explicit, then when we're monitoring it, actually, the town is aware of what your major goals are, and this is definitely cross-cutting, whether it's the town hall or any of the other issues that you have. Um, so we are also requesting a, a regular meeting with the board. You know, one, one, once a quarter, fifteen minutes, we don't even care. Just what are we doing, what has happened so far, how much have we saved, what are, what are the options on the table? You know, what's the green community grant, what's the five-year plan, that, that, those are serious requests. Because that way, we have this short conversation, we can finish, in about two weeks, it'll be done. And then, and then we've all, we're all on the same page. Okay, and, um, but the cost savings, the opportunities, the education, the public, there's so many benefits to actually putting something proactive like this in front of you once a quarter, okay? And, um, actually, I would say, everything else that we would prioritize in terms of projects is outlined here. And, um, you know, it includes municipal electric fleet, vehicle fleet replacement. And I think, Chris, that the, the town is in conversations about that, replacing the electric vehicles. Um, and Chris, let me know if there's anything where you say, no, no, I don't, I don't, I mean, these are, these are all suggestions.
And I'm, uh, what I will tell you is when, when we approve a charge next week, and I'll, um, I'll ask everybody to send any of their comments to, through Tracy, and then we'll, we'll redraft it. We probably won't be specific, because we have to look at it as a, as a potentially something that's gonna be in place for ten years. That, that we're, we're asking you to, you know, it's seven members, the terms are this way. Um, it's to look at municipal and residential and whatever, townwide, energy savings, blah, blah, blah. Separately, we can, we can establish, based on the priorities of the town, and to your point, you know, to figure out how your committee can support all across the board, um, the priorities of the town, what are the specific priorities with respect to, you know, our chief procurement officer, which is, which is Chris, which would be the fleet replacement, so he, and he can help all of us have that conversation about what you can do to help support his efforts.
That would be terrific. But our, our commitment really is to, you know, make this as, as vivid, using tools like this as possible. I mean, Bill really is, this is his work. I mean, having a dashboard of what we're doing with energy is brilliant.
Yeah, this, I mean, this is great and should be on the town website and, and the town Facebook page, right.
So, I, I mean, thank you, that, it's, it's that simple, I, we can be concise. And, um, and we have super people who are interested in working on that.
The, the most, most important thing, I think, is, is that line above where it says municipal electric. And that simple sentence there, you may not need to even change it much. But that's really what the key is, because that's all the breadth that you need. And then when you put the flare, phrase in there, including but not limited to, and that just gives some things to work on, but nobody's bound by it. But the most, the most important thing is, it's almost like what you're making a mission statement of. So that would be the mo, if whoever you're working with on it is to make sure that those two or three lines are as broad.
The lines I read at the direction of the BOSA.
And then as long as you include but, including but limited to at the end, you can put all you want, but that's the variable.
Okay, thanks.
Those two or three lines will give you what you need, so just make that exactly, and that'll make it simpler for us to approve.
Steve?
No, you're correct.
No, you can't, like, you know, add stuff like resiliency, like, you know, you can look at our system as, as such for, you know, options. So you have somebody on the committee that can look at it.
That was one of our top five goals this year, yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna do everything the prior committee was doing, including this broad of a scope, to make you more effective and integrated with the board and the community, right? Is that the idea?
Yes, that's the, the plan.
I just think there's a little dancing around the way this is being done with bylaws and so forth, just we have to be a little careful in that. So I don't know who we directly, Chris could make, if Chris could make sure that, you know, the legality of how we're doing it. Actually, let me finish. So I, I, I think probably mechanically it might be that when it goes to reapply, just nobody apply to the old committee, because we've always made this new committee, and then in the fall, we need to clean it up. Even then, it's legally a little, but, and it'll work out fine.
Just, just on that, um, it's, it's not a bylaw, it's not in the bylaws, it was just established as a, as an article. Um, and we did talk to town council at the Troyka meeting, and he said it could just sit there. And we just won't reappoint to that committee, because that committee will just fade away. Or I would like to clean it up, or just remove it, or just add a sunset date. Because you were effective, and I think in the, in the history, you want somebody to see that that committee, even though the charge was, was for a year appointment, it actually did a lot of stuff for, you know, ten or fif- fifteen years, so. And this'll just open up the communication amongst all of us.
And he's staying.
Yay! Yeah, and there's a, a number of new members, and, um, and we have a bunch of applications, including Tanya. So it'll just be a matter of going, tuk, 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 and you as well, because you're not officially on the committee right now.
It's heart and soul.
Yes, exactly.
Make it official.
So, all right, any other questions from the board?
So on the dashboard, when it's just the solar, from the bottom, and it's just, uh, production, that's, that's per month? And per day, it's about two thousand kilowatt hours?
Per month, uh, oh, all right, now where are you, like, per month we make?
Because I think the production is total production since installation.
Yeah, if you look at the scale, it goes, but he includes weather days, too, it's kinda interesting.
So, so if you do February, that's about somewhere around two thousand kilowatt hours per day? That's, that's pretty impressive.
And it does, and it does include the weather for that day, for this, it's a general area, it's, it's actually interesting.
I mean, we earn about four thousand five hundred dollars a month with that solar array.
Don't tell the OPEB people.
But if this are totally off the grid, you could get
That could supply power.
Two thousand kilowatt hours per day.
Yeah, and that can actually supply, if you just took that city street area, you'd need plenty of power for the whole, like, entire street.
It provides about twenty percent of municipal power, well, I mean, not literally, but, oh boy.
Oh, twenty, that represents about twenty percent.
Twenty percent of municipal electricity for the town.
Very impressive, right, and that was so simple.
It was simple.
It really was, ultimately, so.
That's where we're going, how simple.
Any other questions? So, so in our, in our next packet, um, for our meeting on, on May seventh, we will have sort of a finalized version for discussion, approval, and
Who do we send our comments to?
Um, send them to Tracy, who can pull them together, and then I'll grab them from her and work with, uh, Mary Jo and Steve on it. And then we'll pull all the applications that we have in-house and make those appointments that night. And I'll, I'll get a list of whose applications we have, so if there's somebody like Steve Weiner, for example, who is planning this, I'm just using you as an example, I don't know what the status is, but if his application isn't in, or, you know, we'll just, out of, just to make it clean, I'll ask him for an application and that kind of thing. So, we'll get a, um, assessment of where everything stands.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. And then, um, we are gonna move to the, um, the aggregation article and the revised motion. When last we met, um, you remember the arti, the motion for this Article sixteen um, was somewhat complicated. So, we believe we have a motion that, um, is legal, that co- town council has approved this, um, and we think it's clear. Do you mind if I read it, just for the people out there? So, the motion that we're proposing for town meeting is moved that the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, or their designees, are authorized to study electrical aggregation and develop a plan which would meet the plan standards described in MGL Chapter one six. To provide for the aggregation of the town's total electric power load, municipal and private, commercial and residential, residential either alone, as a town, or in concert with a group of other municipalities. The study and resulting plan authorized by this vote is not to be deemed the vote to initiate the electrical aggregation process described in MGL Chapter one six, fourth, section one, three, four, one, three, four, whatever.
That's much clearer.
Yeah, so this is basically.
It's only two plans.
Doing the plan that meets the requirements for approval by the state. And then the next step would be to make a recommendation to go fully to this aggregation plan. Um, which, at that point, we will have that discussion about what that actually would mean in terms of community. Functioning, energy committee, there may be opportunities for them to help with some of the concerns that we have heard from different people. Amongst us and outside of us, Kevin, did you have anything?
That's right, um, two things, one, did the sponsors of the bill, they, they agree with this, the sponsors of the petition?
Yes.
That's, you worked out with them like we were supposed to, or you, I don't know. The other question might come up is, is, uh, mm, someone might have asked it, then therefore to describe what M G L C, chapter one sixty-four. Section one thirty-four means, I don't know whether we wanna do it here or not, but that may come up on town floor, so somebody can be ready to explain what that is.
Well, actually, you, you could speak to this probably backwards in your sleep, so.
Yeah, but I had less than three minutes to do so, for the whole thing, so.
Well, no, actually, if someone asks the question, you then would be the qualified person to answer it. See, it seemed to me it would be logical that someone, you don't understand the question, someone's gonna ask what's in that. And just be prepared to answer, somebody should be prepared, cause it won't be some of us.
So we, we talked at the, the Troyka Met to discuss, you know, who would speak to various articles at town meeting. And, um, we are gonna ask Steve to present this, even though it's a selectman article, we, I mean, we're not the experts. So he will have the opportunity to introduce this to town meeting. And will presumably say, according to Mass General Law, chapter whatever, um, you can do, you know, towns can do this. This is what electrical aggregation is. Um, and then, and then, you know, the, Dan will read, if, depending on what our recommendation is, Dan will read that. If any of, you know, unless there's dissent or some strong reason for us to speak on our vote, um, we won't. But we certainly can, but we're gonna be looking to the expert to, um, answer, handle most of the questions. Um.
Looks good to me.
So I, I, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What is the vote to initiate electrical aggregation, what does that look like? Is it, is it a vote of the selectmen, is it a vote on town meeting floor?
It's a vote on town meeting.
Town meeting.
Okay, can we just, uh, say something like, I'll, I'll support this if we have a line in there that says, something like, which will be presented. At, uh, for a vote at town meeting.
So.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Cause the way it's left, it's open, it's like, the study and resulting plan authorized by this vote is not to be deemed a vote to initiate the electrical aggregation process. Described in blah, 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 blah.
Do you wanna explain that?
You, you, you can, you can, you can better.
So, so the law doesn't technically set up a two-stage process, which is what the proponents have set up. So what this does is, 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 is make it a two-stage process.
Right.
Uh, otherwise, it could be interpreted as leaping right all the way to aggregation without going back to town meeting.
I understand that, that's why.
By, but, by not putting, automatic return to town meeting, it means that you have to affirmatively vote to put this on a future warrant. So it doesn't automatically go onto a future warrant jacket, it only goes on, after the plan's developed, everybody says, so.
So, so that sounds great, and just for clarity's sake, I, you know, it'd be great if we had something that said, which. You know, somehow, there, there has to, you gotta let me get this up, okay? Somehow, there's gotta be a mechanism that says, uh, this needs, you know, it goes to, to a warrant, I, I mean, whatever the process is, right? I think if you leave it open like this, you know, two years from now, somebody could just say, well, we already voted on it, let's just get it done.
So, um, yes, um, this original motion had language, you know, that a, uh, electrical aggregation. Would be subject to the vote of a future town, we can't put that in a motion according to town council. But the description, and I, and I think Steve will make this point to town meeting, and the description, um, in the warrant. Specifically says that this is a town meeting process, this is literally just the study. Um, and any future, um, action toward electrical aggregation would be a secondary vote. Town coun- we had that in there, Steve recommended that language, just for clarification, that there would be a second vote for electrical aggregation. But town council very specifically said, you can't say there's gonna be another vote when you don't know whether there's gonna be another vote. And the study may, it could come back where we didn't wanna go into that path, so that would bind us.
May be subject to, uh, you know, uh, a future warrant article.
Well, the, the, the description is an informational summary that's in the warrant that went out there, but it kinda says that, I, I mean, I, I guess.
The motion, I mean, Paul, literally, we had a conversation, yeah, he said.
I know what you're saying, I know where you're going.
No, I'm saying, I mean, I just.
We do, and we originally had it in there.
So, so why, you know, why, would you, may be subject to, you know, a.
Well, you, you could just mention this on town meeting floor, when he presents it, just say, this legally just gets the plan constructed. And if we do decide to go forward, it does require a future warrant article to be decided at town meeting.
But it's, but according to town council, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be in the legal motion. And it does say that this is not the deemed a vote to initiate. I mean, we can, we can revisit that.
Like this is to address the concern that you're raising, cause the concern, and again, I know it's Paul was being built and suspended about this, is that. If it does, you, someone could interpret it to say, well, we've already taken one vote, we don't need to take another vote. And the point was, well, we've committed to taking a second vote, so this, this requires a second bite at the apple. Because it, the, even though the process will have been, well, 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 it only requires a second bite at the apple if there's a desire to have a second bite at the apple.
Correct.
If there's a desire, if, if, I don't know, let, let's say that everyone's, uh, somebody that's home energy, where you know, like, in fact, in the future. You just throw a few things in your little effusion reactor at home, you don't need this anymore, everyone can have their own green energy by recycling their old apple peels. Then you won't have to do this anymore, uh, obviously, that's unlikely to happen, but you never know, so, um.
So, okay, I, I'll support this, I just want everybody to realize, you know, the intent is to do the, the study first.
Yes.
And once the study's done, independent of what's happening here tonight, we're gonna decide to vote or not to vote, or maybe put it on a warrant, maybe not put it on a warrant. Just so we're all clear, in two years from now, I'm gonna have to stand up at the town meeting as a citizen and say.
It can't be implemented without that second vote.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Right.
You wanna do a recommendation on this tonight?
Yeah.
That's why, by the way, that's what I, that's what I'm told.
Because we have the other committee recommendations, and there's no reason to delay this, um, so does anybody want?
Uh, make a motion that the board's liking recommends to town meeting, Article sixteen, electrical building aggregation.
Is there a second?
That was a good way out of it.
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor, all right, four to zero.
Close the motion ticket.
All right, we got a motion.
Lockdown, exciting presentation.
May I ask a question?
Sure, come on up.
So was this vote on just how to word the motion?
It's supportive of the act.
It's supportive of it.
The article.
Great.
Recommendation to town.
One, one other question, um, if the, if the board of selectmen decides, uh, not to, uh. Put, um, implementation as another article a year from now, it could still be put on there by a citizen's petition, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, wonderful, thank you very much.
You're most welcome, thank you for all your work.
I'm gonna have three good answers. Three advisory, but I can have this.
Yes, I know, that's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, town manager update, how about that?
I'll make it quick, uh, two things, uh, so, had a good meeting, um, on the land disposition policy. Have all the input, everyone working to put something together, which will recirculate to all of you. Um, maybe the end of this week, if not right after town meeting, so you'll get to chew on it long, long enough in advance before the next selectives meeting. Uh, the memorial policy's taking a little bit longer, we'll see, I, I've been charged with encouraging, I've been extremely encouraged to see if I can get that all done in the next week.
We'd be kicking the memorial policy down the road for.
Uh, so now you can all comment and, and talk about that, yeah, I, I already started this draft policy that the community's had, um. The other big item, I think everyone is aware, since we're talking about it again tonight, uh, annual town meeting is a week from yesterday. Seven P M, Sullivan Gymnasium, Middle High School, if you wanna learn everything you wanna know about, uh, town meeting. There is a little town meeting preview TV show, which we've been doing now for the last couple of years, that's been, that was taped last week. It should have, or a charity be on la- at TV, I have not seen it yet, um, and then on the website, there's information on every arc. Um, you wanna go up there, there's a town budget book, which is a hundred fifty pages, everything you ever wanted to know about the town budget, all the policies, the capital plan is in there. Uh, there's our information about all the other articles, either literally written on the web, on, on the town mini page, with his links with additional information. Including the applications with the C B C articles, Steve's, uh, Steve's, there's F A Qs on which for aggregation. So read, everyone, everyone's assigned with this week, that everyone's back from school vacation week is to, to go to town website. Read and come prepared, uh, for an exciting town meeting, so we, we should be fully, I think, I think we're in good informational shape, so. That's, that's my quick update.
Thank you, all right, Jack?
Um, good, thank you very much.
All right, Paul?
Uh, the C F seven year annual fundraiser at the code for a night, uh, all are invited, it's usually a pretty good turn up. Um, and it starts at seven, tickets are available online, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Um, just, just a couple of updates, um, um, one of the things, and I just wanna bring it up. Because, um, I think all the selectmen have been outreach to by members of the community regarding town hall. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we asked Chris to put together an executive summary on kinda what, the town hall project. Where it currently stands, uh, with the, the current board composition, um, and probably, I mean, there's so, there's so many. Um, moving pieces right now, but, um, within the month-ish, we'll have something to talk about. Um, because I imagine that a lot of the town hall, um, discussions will get re-energized over the summer. As, uh, we get numbers from, um, for the roof of the old town building, et cetera. Um, so that is, that's happening, and you know, um, if there are people, I believe the committee is close to full, at least as we originally charged it. But if there are people that, you know, are interested in, um, participating, they can certainly fill out an application. Um, the other thing is, there's a meeting on Thursday night, which is, was scheduled only because. The bids for the repair or redo of the, of the historic town hall building roof. Um, are coming in on Thursday, so there is a posted joint meeting, selectmen, advisory and capital budget. Um, to see those, see, hear those bids, walk through that, hopefully make recommendations, or to town meeting. And ultimately to the selectmen, um, I, I know of one selectman who is a hu- is able to go. Um, so we may not be there, so we're posted, I know, you're the one. Um, and I, I think it's more important that advisory and capital budget, hopefully they'll have a quorum, they can make a recommendation. We can see their recommendations, get the information from you when it's available, and then we'll vote, um, our recommendation. At town meeting, so just, there are two pieces, two things within the capital budget that, um, have been held up. This is one of them, and the other one is a snowplow, um, sidewalk, snowplow that's been, um, in the, in the capital plan for four years. So I think they'll make recommendations on that, there are some firm numbers on that, um, they'll make recommendations, um, Thursday night. Assuming they both have quorums.
And there was a little, there was a, a two-page information, no one was writing it, it was circulated electronically today on the snowplow.
That was sent to us by email, right?
By email, yeah.
Okay.
What was the bottom line on that one?
Well, the recommendation from Public Works for mades is trackless, but the, the fully, which by the way, has two, a dual use. It's not only a snowplow, a sidewalk snowplow, but can also be a sidewalk or a trackless street sweeper. Uh, which is something we don't do a lot, as much of, and it'd be a lot faster, more efficient, so. This is an American-made, I think it's Canadian-made, it's a North American-made product, as well.
So it's getting away from the German thing?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, called a trackless, but I, uh, it's used by, but the memo includes other communities that use it. It also has the actual bidded cost from the state contract, um, we're also negotiating with every community about the pos- prospect of getting it. Uh, they have a one that's slightly u- slightly used, uh, uh, whether or not we can get to a good price, we'll, we'll know better tomorrow, we're still going back and forth. Um, so.
Since we can't all be there, I mean, on, on Thursday, could you?
At the end of the day.
Sure you email to all of us, all the information you can, because I, I'm, I feel a little strange, tell you the truth, voting on this roof thing. Just before town meeting, especially if we haven't seen any.
Yes, so.
It's such an, I can see that creating a considerable dialogue at town meeting, because, uh, it's the town's town hall, you know, I don't.
Thank you for raising that point, Kevin, so my, my hope is to have a memo prepared that day, as to what the bids were, and if they're in line with where we were, we'll be good. If they're not, then we won't.
What are we gonna do?
Right.
So we'll know then, and you'll get a memo saying, here's the bid, here's where it is, we're, we're good, we have, there were a couple of people who visited, you know, a couple of companies did come. Uh, uh, D P W, Jason Federico in particular, are, uh, called a bunch of local contractors, they're all D Camp certified. Uh, so it went, it was very widely distributed, um, I know a couple of folks, a couple of companies did come for the onsite, it was an optional onsite visit. But people did come to look, um.
So how many bids did we get?
No, 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 we won't, they won't come in till, till Thursday, they have to come in by noon, so most bids don't really arrive until that morning, they carry it over, and the people stay in the room and watch. So, um.
Wow, and you have to take the lowest bid.
Lowest qualifying.
Lowest qualifying, okay.
So, I mean, I, but since everyone's D Camp certified, it should be, since they're, they're already pre-qualified in their abilities, it's a little easier. If you don't have something like that, you, it usually takes some time, cause you gotta check the references and make sure that, if they're already pre-D Camp certified, they're theoretically already cleared all the thresholds. They're financially viable, they've done projects like this before, so, um.
What you tell me, you vote, you can just.
Yeah, so, once you get it, yeah, so, so we, we should be okay, uh, and hopefully we'll get some good bits back.
Yeah, and could you, when you send that memo, could you send it to the selectmen?
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I'll, I'll send it to them.
Advance of the meeting, right.
Right, well, sorry. Um, hopefully, we'll have something together that afternoon, at least a memo explaining, that this is what happened, this is what happened, so, um. And then if anyone has any questions, obviously, you're free to contact, uh, the office, so, actually, you, you'll be the expert, you have to.
Uh, thank you very much.
Um, we still have one, uh, topic not reasonably anticipated, which was, Chris was the.
So this.
Complete streets grant application.
I don't know, I, I think Brian's, I think we circulated this electronically, uh, this was the memo from Brian, you have this, and you have the hard, this is. So, and this is, everybody wants to see if these are, this is, so the good news is that, this is, these are, this is the, uh, this is what was circulated to, um. To, to the state, so this is what's been approved, uh, so.
And we saw this for a couple of weeks now.
Policy, the state approved the policy, um, forty-eight hours after we submitted it, really good news. This took them a few more weeks, so they, the prioritization plan is, I think, thirty projects, something like, so, um. Something, I think it's the exact number, but you see that they're all numbered on the side here, so, and they, these were all vetted through, uh, by, from public input. And then Public Works sat through, and, and it was all gone through, so this, uh, which is in no particular, there are ranks, but they're, you know, they don't have, you don't have to follow them in that order. Uh, the state approved, gave approval to this yesterday, so we can now apply for grants, which are due May first. Uh, now, we can just apply for grants, now, now, the thing is that these projects are already, already planned, right? So, um, based on what, the fact we're having the two-hundred-fiftieth year, um, and also some of the, the issues at the school. Brian and Public Works recommend, uh, the projects that are listed one or two here, even though they're, they're writing a little bit differently. Town common industry improvements, which includes, um, uh, cleanup of a whole bunch of crosswalks, uh, new eighty-eight curb ramps. The entire sidewalk that wraps the common, I'm talking about the primary common, not, not, not the, uh, the one that the, the church sits on, cause there's no sidewalks on that. We do the path that cuts across, um, and, um, the whole project, when you come, and resetting all the curbs. Too much, it's a, it's a, it's a, a little bit more than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and that's been specked out, um. Now, it would still have to be bid, and we would still have to, you know, pull a lot of the materials together, um, then this is potentially a hundred percent funded by the state.
So what do we need to do right now?
Well, I just wanted, I wanted, I wanted the board just to be comfortable with these particular projects. The other one is extending Bancroft Way is technically with the entrance way to the school is called, I forget, I, I, I kept looking for a street name. The actual entryway that goes to the back of the school is called Bancroft Way, it runs by alumni field.
Runs by a field.
There's no, there's no sidewalk, it, it, so when you're coming down pond street, you turn to the school, you have to walk into the street.
Right.
This would run a sidewalk all the way to the entrance.
These two projects on the master sheet?
Yes, they're, they're, they're listed, if you look, Kevin, they're, they're, they're number, well, it's number thirteen, but they're the first one on the list.
Got you, oh, yeah.
So, so they'll put a sidewalk, if you're facing.
If you're standing on pond street.
Stand.
Yeah, it went all along that road.
On the right-hand side.
Yeah, so there's no sidewalk there at all right now, which would improve particularly with all the traffic that comes in and out of there, so it would make walking a whole lot. One of the reasons, they actually hold walkers, and that seems crazy, but walkers are held, if you actually have a safe sidewalk, you don't have to hold walkers, they can actually lead, cause they're on a sidewalk, it'd be safe. Uh, so this, this is, would, would really facilitate safety at the schools, so this was also on the list. There's a possibility of adding one more, where we were talking about maybe adding the, the crosswalk reconstruction of the Paul Pratt Library, which is ranked as number one in terms of safety. We'll see, because we could go up to four hundred thousand, the debate was, do we really ask for four hundred thousand, will they approve it, or do we ask for a little bit less? Uh, these two projects together are about three.
So they aggregate, they don't pick projects, so you take the aggregate.
We asked for the projects as. We ask for the projects, yeah, the max they'll fund is four hundred, so, and they'll pay for a hundred percent up to four hundred. So, uh, and, and again, that's, they'll, so the state's already approved now theoretically, as long as we pick projects off this list for this cycle.
We'll get the funding.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they can.
Right, yeah, the.
Partial fund, right?
So, so based on this, so if, we, I just wanted, we, we would normally just apply for these anyway, but because of the, you know, we've had the board fully engaged on this the whole way, the recommendation is to support the town common and the high school entry sidewalks as the first priorities, and if, again, if we can add the Paul Pratt as well, we will, um, so.
I just have a really quick question, I don't wanna belabor any of this, but would the town common work, only because it's the town common? Will, will any of that have to go through the Cohasset Common Historic District?
Um, it turns out, it turns out, I, no, they don't technically have any jurisdiction over that, but yes, everyone will be vetted cleanly to be safe.
Approval?
Uh, you know, we're not gonna put, you know, pink brick or anything like that in there, you know, uh, and then you're replaced in kind, and we have to fit within, you know, the budget, so. Uh, this will not fund a beautiful brick sidewalk across the common, it, it would fund cleaning everything up and making it look a lot nicer than it does today.
So just for, for future, when this gets approved, um, I, you know, I, I definitely think it would be worthy of a little more than your normal public works project discussion through town.
We wouldn't be coming to you, you know, a, a week before the grant application deadline.
Right.
Um, this is just because we accelerated the process so quickly to get, we want to get into the loop now, because this will allow us to work in the fall.
Right. Right.
Otherwise, we have to wait till the spring.
I just wanna make sure at that point, once we get the approval, that we reach out to, I know Merle has been working with, with Jason and others to try to redesign some, I want this to be at least a part of their general thing.
This won't, this won't prevent, prevent any future work, um, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't change, it just makes it cleaner and safer, it doesn't.
Yeah, it, but it may ultimately be all we need to do, too, so I just wanna.
It may be. Just like, that included parking changes, that's, none of that is in this, those are, that's too big a list.
Got it.
So do you want us to vote on this?
I, I would, if you would be okay with it.
Wanna make a motion?
Uh, I move that we, um, I don't know what to say, uh, that we approve, uh, the submission of, uh, the grant application for one, the town common pedestrian improvement at two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, and two, the high school entrance Bancroft Way at fifty-four thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Um, you wanna throw in the third one if possible?
Well, again, if possible, the, 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 the.
If possible, the, the, uh, town common.
Priorities.
The, the crosswalk at, the crosswalk at the Paul Pratt Library.
The crosswalk at the Paul Pratt Library.
I'm gonna say that at the discretion of the town manager.
Yep.
At the discretion of the town manager.
That way he can do it or not do it.
All right.
Sorry.
All righty, all those in favor?
Aye. Good, thank you.
Okay, we approve the minutes, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
Not bad.